In the silence, please. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffin? Mr. Griffin? Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe? Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Raedel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Your vote?
Here.
Mr. Griffin?
Here. Thank you.
Mr. McKinley?
Present.
And nine of eleven present.
Thank you. We have a motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Normally, Ms. Howe does that, but she's unavailable this evening. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Sheila. Ms. Sagan?
Sagan. The second?
Chair, Perry.
Second, Mr. Haas. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. Moving down to the second motion. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Kendra.
Mr. Raedel, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schnee? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition?
No. Walter?
Mr. Griffith? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carries. The public hearing is now open. The public comment is on the proposed ordinance that amends the 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. This is an amendment that deals with the emergency assistance rental program. And through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of Human Services, there is a $11,418,560.78 grant that is involved with this particular budget amendment. Now open to the public, please. Any member of the public who would like to speak in this regard? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second, Perry.
Perry, second. Who was the first? Was Mr. Schnee? Who was first on that?
Oh, it's Chris.
Okay, Mr. Perry. Very good. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. We're going to the second public hearing at 5:40. So we have five minutes until that will convene. Okay, it's now 5:40. We're going to convene the second public hearing. We've already done the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence. So I'd ask Ms. Lawrence to do a roll call, please.
Mr. Griffin? Mr. Griffin? Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe is absent. Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Raedel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman? Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban? Mr. Urban? Mr. Voe?
Here.
Mr. Griffin?
Present.
Ms. Sedman?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
I don't see his icon.
And Mr. McKinley?
Present.
Nine of eleven present.
Thank you. The first motion is to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Haas, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Schnee? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. Second motion, to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved. So moved, Leanne.
Leanne? Do we have a second?
Second, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions?
No, Mr. Griffith.
Mr. Griffith, any opposition? Any abstentions? Okay, none heard. Motion carries. This is the public comment on the ordinance amending the 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County, the general fund. And this is regards to a grant that comes to us through the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Revenue, $73,558. And this will allow for COVID expenses to law enforcement throughout the county. Public is now open for public comment. Anyone from the public who would like to address counsel in this regard for this budget amendment? Hearing none. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Present, Mr. Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Raedel? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. We have one more public hearing that will commence at 5:50.
Jared, can you hear me?
Hey, Sheila. We can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's now 5:50. We're going to call the meeting to order. We've already done the pledge in a moment of silence. So I'd ask Ms. Lawrence to roll call, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe is absent. Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Raedel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban? Mr. Urban? Mr. Voe?
Here.
Mr. McKinley?
Present.
Nine of eleven present.
Thank you. The first motion is to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement a majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Second, Sheila.
Ms. Sagan? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. Motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Kendra.
Ms. Raedel? Do we have a second for Ms. Raedel?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition?
No. Walter?
Mr. Griffith? Any abstentions? Okay, none heard on the abstentions. Motion carries. So we're now open for public comment on the proposed ordinance amended in 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County under drug and alcohol. And again, this is a grant coming to Luzerne County dealing with a voluntary grant in housing, which is $1,423,850. And then expenses, the same number, $1,423,850. Now open for public comment on the budget amendment. Members of the public who would like to comment on the proposed budget amendment for the 2021 fiscal year budget? Do we have a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second?
Second, Kendra.
Ms. Raedel? All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearings. We'll begin the voting session at 6:01 PM. I think so. See what happens. Hello? What was that?
Hello, just a reminder to please use your phone's mute buttons. If you end up not being heard, it is star six to unmute if we receive background noise and we have to meet you. We can listen to the great county council meeting that's coming up.
Okay, it's now 6:01 PM. We're going to call the meeting to order. We're going to begin with the pledge of the flag, followed by a moment of silence, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag and the eyes of America.
To the republic.
Republic, which stands one nation. With liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Ms. Lawrence, roll call, please.
Mr. Griffin?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Howe is absent this evening. Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Raedel?
Here.
Ms. Sedman?
Here.
Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Voe?
Here.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Ten of eleven present.
Thank you. Mr. DeLuca, you want to comment on the executive session, please?
Yes, Council Matten Executive Session from five P M until five thirty P M via this Teams platform to discuss personnel matters related to the county manager.
Thank you. We have some recognitions from some people who have left employment with the county. The first one is Sheri Under, clerk two in the assessor's office. Second one is Denise Ann McColsky, a nurse that worked in our prison. James, our weather, planning and zoning analyst, and he worked on our planning and zoning office for many years. And we've heard from James under a lot of the zoning and planning issues that we've talked about over the past several years. We want to congratulate them, wish them well in their future endeavors and good luck with their health. And we'll send a letter of congratulations to each of those. additions or deletions to the voting session agenda?
Hey, Mr. McGinley, Steve Urban. Like to move the resolution that I sent forward to tonight's voting, terminate the county manager.
Okay. County manager. That's by Mr. Urban. Do we have a second for Mr. Urban's motion to terminate the county manager?
I'll second that.
Is that Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call on whether we should add this item to the agenda. Ms. Lawrence, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke is absent, Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
No.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Mr. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Three yes, seven no.
Okay, that item will not be added.
Mr. McGinley?
Anything else?
Um, Mr. McGinley?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I have a resolution that I sent to you over the weekend to ask for an investigation into two thousand twenty-one primary election by the district attorney's office. I'd like that resolution added to the agenda, please.
Well, bring that up, Mr. Griffith. Resolution, the D A's office. Or investigation regarding the primary election, correct?
Correct.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, sir, yes ma'am, excuse me.
Sorry, can I just ask Mr. Griffith a question?
Sure.
Mr. Griffith, is that because you believe there was criminal intent in the primary?
No, it's because I don't know what intent was in the primary. And the district attorney is the only one that can investigate that.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith to introduce that resolution?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban. So we have a resolution by Mr. Griffith, second by Mr. Urban, to ask the district attorney's office to investigate regarding the primary election. Roll call, please.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Howke is absent, Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Yes, you said?
Yes, I said.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
No.
Ms. Schnee?
No.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Voe?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley, oh, excuse me, Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
And Mr. McGinley?
No.
Six yes, four no.
Okay, that'll be added to the agenda. That will be number ten on the agenda.
Do we have, do we have the resolution that I can get on the website?
Uh, let's see here, that's a good question.
I, I think I did, I, I think I sent that on Saturday. Uh, but I can, I can send it, I have it open real quick, I could send out.
Okay, send it to Ms. Lawrence, please.
Absolutely.
So she can make that adjustment on the webpage.
She will.
I found it also, so I ordered it too. So it should be, by the time we get there, I'm sure it'll be posted. Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, Sheila.
Saving, second, Mr. Summer. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any in opposition?
No, Walter.
Well, opposition, Mr. Griffith?
Yes, opposed because the termination resolution was not added.
That's fine.
Actually.
Any abstentions? Okay.
Mr. McGinley, change.
Excuse me, speak up, please.
I said, it's Urban, change my vote to a no, please.
That's fine. Please record Mr. Urban as a no also. Moving down to the motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the requirement majority of those participating in the meeting must be physically present at the meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Kendra.
Ms. Radel, do we have a second?
Second, Liam.
Ms. McDermott? All in favor indicate by saying aye, aye. Any in opposition, any abstentions? None heard, motion carries. Moving down to the next motion, motion to suspend the bylaws regarding the conduct of public meetings to the extent that the current format is inconsistent with the term of the state's emergency declaration, do we have a motion?
So moved, Liam.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Second, Perry.
Mr. Perry. All in favor indicate by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition?
Yes, Mr. Griffith.
Mr. Griffith? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Public comment on the voting session agenda items. We're now open for public comment on voting session agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Mr. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, with regards to sanctuary, uh, second amendment sanctuary. Uh, I am in favor of this because I believe nine counties in the state so far have adopted uh, similar language and it is complimentary, not in uh, not in contradiction with any of the laws on the books for the state nor the state constitution, actually complements the state constitution and the federal constitution uh, with regards to the second amendment, so I think that this is um, just stating a reinforcement of the support for the second amendment by our county. Uh, with respect to the administrative code, Mr. McGinley, I would have liked to have asked um, council member, council member Howke, because she worked so hard along with you and Mr. Griffith on this um, administrative code process. Uh, I do have that lingering question with respect to the community, Office of Community Development uh, uh, executive director as it pertains to his position as executive director of the redevelopment authority when it comes to funding for HUD. Uh, I do believe Mr. DeLuca rendered an opinion on that uh, back in two thousand fifteen, but still there was nothing to remedy the fact that if Mr. Riley as director of the redevelopment authority applies for any funds on behalf of the redevelopment authority um, and his role as community development director, would that impede on the projects that end, the, any projects that the redevelopment authority would incur in the future? Or even the blighted property committee, since the blighted property committee is by definition an administrator of the blighted property process? So I think that needs to be squared away once and for all. Um, and also with respect to the manager, with respect to the district attorney, excuse me, uh, investigating, I'm in strong support of that because we don't know what happened. We need to find out the facts and the district attorney and the county detectives are better suited to find out what the intent was, uh, whatever that may be and what really transpired in terms of any kind of problems, as you know, Mr. Chairman, Hazleton had problems with, uh, you know, voting machines being left behind as well as the drop box, Mr. McGinley, as far as the drop box was taken uh, the afternoon before the election, whereas the Act seventy-seven says it can only be, the drop box can be taken up till eight o'clock or the night before the election. So I would like to know why that was, why that took place, so that, those are my questions that I would like to see the district attorney follow up with, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Other members of the public, please.
Mr. Manta?
Go ahead, Mr. Manta.
Yeah, my comments are also about the investigation of the election of two thousand twenty. Twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry. And I thought that if, after the election there should be a posting of all the candidates and who won after each precinct. A couple of people told me that there was no posting of the winners. And I was wondering if it was just an error, again, on the county manager's part or an error on the election bureau part or both. I feel this strongly that the motion that was brought up to fire the, the the county manager is in tow. My recollection is that there was money spent the wrong way, there was election problems, there was problems with different projects that he was involved in. And my gosh, that the people could finally open their eyes and say the man didn't do such a very good job like everybody seems to claim that he did. And, and it seems that if you lay, if, if you accept his resignation, that's giving him a pass again. How many times do we want to give this gentleman a pass? Uh, that's my question to the county council. How many times could you look in the mirror and say, oh, we're gonna give him a pass again? And, and at, at the last go around, we should have the strength in, in the county council to say, look, he messed up, fire him and you don't have to pay him the rest of the contract and he, he gets no benefits. And if he's going to be in Luzerne County, whatever that group that he's gonna be in, uh, I think they should be aware of his undertakings and lack of responsibility of the county manager job. And let everybody else kick the tires, light the fire and walk away. I mean, come on, somebody has to stand up and say enough is enough. I mean, that's all I have to say.
Come next, anyone else in the public, please? Anyone else in the public, please? I have several emails that I'm not gonna read at this time because it all involves a agenda topic. The first one I'm gonna read is from a gentleman, Mr. Stan Edwards. I would like to register my very strong support in favor of Luzerne County becoming a second amendment sanctuary county at this time in our country when the second amendment rights are under constant assault. I believe it's critical next step for Luzerne County. This one is from Mr. Charles Thomas. Please vote to make Luzerne County a second amendment sanctuary county as specified in the agenda items, council, county council number eight. Motion to adopt the resolution, second amendment sanctuary county declaration. The right to bear arms is constantly under attack and defending it is more important than ever. This one is from Rick Davis. My name is Rick Davis from Black Creek Township. I strongly support and urge the council to adopt the second amendment sanctuary resolution or ordinance, say that you, the council of Luzerne County are with your constituents and backed them by showing your support to preserve and protect our constitutional rights. Please join the many counties and townships in Pennsylvania and adopt the resolution declaring Luzerne County a second amendment sanctuary. We have discussed it at our last two Black Creek Township meetings and will most like, likely, I believe, move forward within our next meeting. We have a draft resolution ready to be voted on. At our last meeting, many residents wanted to know if county council was showing any interest in the following. The growing numbers of two-way sanctuaries across the country, along with counties in Pennsylvania that have adopted it. Very concerned citizen Luzerne County would like to see the council members of Luzerne County that we elected make a statement that you're going to protect our constitutional rights from tyrannical government. This one is Mr. Christopher Bogdan. As a member of this county's constituents, I'm writing to vote yes on the proposed second amendment county bill. I know that a great number of county residents are in favor of such a bill. My family has resided in this county for several generations. We love this county and only want the best for it. Many of the residents hunt here, yes, but many of the hunters are also recreational shooters. Not only that, many of our non-hunting residents are recreational shooters. Want our right to pursue happiness in our own way to be protected. We also want our rights to protect ourselves and our homes preserved. By establishing our county as a second amendment sanctuary, we are preserving the liberties of its residents and sending a message to state legislators that we do not want our second amendment rights to be infringed on. Our own state constitution says the right of the citizens to bear arms in defense of themselves and the state shall not be questioned. Please vote yes, so we can show that we believe in the rights that our many founding fathers gave us, thank you for your time. This is from Mr. Bradley Lester. I am Bradley Lester and I'm recently a new resident of Luzerne County, sugar much. And I support the county becoming a second amendment sanctuary. This writer's mentions second, only after rights guaranteed under the first amendment and uses unequivocal language of shall not be infringed, in addition to our state constitution uses a unequivocal language stating that our right to keep and bear arms shall not, never be questioned. I will recognize that this is largely symbolic. This would send a clear message to both Harrisburg and Washington, the people of the county, think all Americans, regardless of race, gender, sexuality or religion, have the right to defend themselves both personally and our Commonwealth and nation against all enemies, foreign and domestic. This is from Heather Mason. I would like to ask you to please support the second amendment sanctuary, sanctuary status. And the final one is from David Walsh and Julia Lloyd Walsh. Members of Luzerne County Council, my wife and I are opposed to the proposed resolution and urge council to vote to not pass this resolution. Number one, we believe the proposal is unnecessary since most of it is all law enforcement officers and elected officials in the county take a solemn oath to uphold the constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of the United States and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Number two, we believe that if passed, the resolution can send conflicting messages to law enforcement regarding the enforcement of current and future state and federal laws and regulations. For example, would this resolution somehow be interpreted as a signal to law enforcement agencies to not enforce any red flag law or conditions of the court mandated restraining orders that require removal of firearms from accounting. Number three, why should Luzerne County establish a sanctuary with one of its ten bill of rights? What does this say about all the other rights? Are those rights not as important to the county as those written in the Second Amendment? Our perspective is, is it does, in, it does indicate bias towards the Second Amendment. Lastly, we feel this is political. The country is plagued with far too much violence involving the use of firearms. At some point, it is our hope that the citizens of the country come together to at least reduce the number of senseless killings involving firearms. In order for that forum to occur, there needs to be an equal access to the podium for citizens to express their opinions. Passes of this resolution can be viewed as prohibiting the free exercise of those with differing opinions on the use of firearms and getting in the way of rights to petition the government or redress of grievances as guaranteed in the First Amendment to our Constitution. Please do not approve the resolution to declare Luzerne County as a Second Amendment Sanctuary. And I know there is one more.
Mr. McGinley? Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Who wrote that last letter? Who wrote the last one?
The last one is David Walsh and Julie Lloyd Walsh. They live in Shaffer Town.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, there's one more. Oh, boy, where did I put that? Printed out today was from Mr. Dr. Paul Adaro. Let me pull it up and I will read that. Uh, he asked for this letter to be read into the minutes. Honorable members of Luzerne County Council, please read into the record the resolution passed by Butler Township Board of Supervisors on April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one concerning the Second Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Please read through each line of the resolution in order and ask if any member disagrees with that line. If any member disagrees with any line, please have the member state publicly the reasons for doing so. This will allow the proper debate over the issue of making Luzerne County a Second Amendment Sanctuary and allow the public know how the members stand on the issue. If there are no disagreements with the Butler Township Resolution, then the debate can proceed as to the definition of the Second Amendment Sanctuary in Luzerne County. Examples of such policy can be attained by looking at other states such as the Commonwealth of Virginia, where most of its counties are Second Amendment Sanctuaries. If there are arguments against Luzerne County being a sanctuary county for the Second Amendment because the county does not have that power, I respectfully ask the county council why Philadelphia can be a sanctuary, something that's legal, while Luzerne County cannot be a sanctuary or something that is quite legal in both the U.S. Constitution and the Pennsylvania State Constitution, the right to keep and bear arms. I would also ask the county council to petition the state legislature to make Pennsylvania a Second Amendment Sanctuary Commonwealth and to pass enabling legislation that allows local governments to declare themselves Second Amendment Sanctuaries. Our Constitution and our freedom are under attack by the government that is no longer a federal, but a central government in Washington. The bill of rights is sacred and yet we have a city president who said when he was campaigning on two nine twenty, that no amendment is absolute. By declaring a, by declaring Luzerne County a Second Amendment Sanctuary, you are reestablishing federalism and protecting our freedom. America is watching. May the Lord our God guide your deliberations. Respectfully submitted, Frank Palladore, medical doctor from drums. Believe those are all the communications that we received. So going on to our first agenda item on the second page, motion to approve the minutes of the May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one voting session.
Present it, Snee.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second for Mr. Snee?
Second, man.
Ms. McDermott. All in favor in by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any in opposition?
Yes, Mr. Griffith.
Mr. Griffith and Mr. Urban, any abstentions? Motion carries. We're moving down to agenda item number one.
Old Business, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, we don't have anything listed, but go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Um, under Old Business, I asked, uh, about a month ago, I asked for a report on the investigation into the suicide uh at the prison from the manager. I have not received any information from the manager regarding that. Uh, I wanted to know whether the coroner autopsy was completed. I didn't get an answer to that. Um, I would like to know of, and I sent an email to the manager asking why Mr. Robshaw was transferred out of the prison to the coroner's office. I did not get an answer to that. So if I could get an answer to those three, I have other things that I wanted to talk about, but uh, under Old Business, but those three are probably the most uh older of Old Business. We didn't do Old Business last meeting. So if we could get an answer to those questions about the investigation into the suicide, can we get reports from the DA on that or are we gonna wait for the newspaper on that one?
Well, I, I certainly don't have any reports to help you, but I don't know what, what the answers would be. Does anybody who's on here?
The manager's on the call, is the manager on the call?
Um, I'm here.
I believe he was, I saw his icon earlier, yes.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
I, I, I can't speak for the district attorney. Um, I'll ask the coroner for an update.
Uh, how about the issue with Mr. Robshaw being transferred to the coroner's office for a month and a half?
Uh, Mr. Robshaw wasn't transferred. Uh, he, he was temporarily moved over to the coroner's office to assist Mr. uh Hacken for a while, uh, and then he's moved back.
Oh, okay, all right. That answers that one. Uh, Mr. McGinley also, under Old Business, the LCCC waiver. I've requested the information from the solicitor's office and the solicitor's office has done their due diligence to try and get an answer for me from the college, from LCCC. Uh, I think it's very unfair for this council not to have that information. That is a board, not an authority. When we asked this information of LCTA, they were very forthcoming. They told us exactly what the life insurance cost. They told us exactly the members that were getting the life insurance and they took appropriate actions to remove that benefit from those board members. I did men- mention at the last meeting that I was more than happy to uh not ask for the removal of board members based on the fact that they have taken that policy away. However, the ability for them to not be forthcoming with this council to tell us how much that waiver costs the county taxpayers, because we do give them five, five some, over five million dollars to run that college. And I'm not asking for names. I know that was one of the issues that uh their solicitor had, was I was asking for family members' names. I don't really need a name to it. What I need to know is if you are a board member, did you have family members that took the tuition waiver and how much did that tuition waiver cost the county? That was the question that I asked and they will not be forthcoming with that information. So if I don't get that information by the next meeting, I will proceed with removal of those board members that took the waiver. I will not, I will not allow the taxpayers to just uh arbitrarily have those people take that waiver and not admit how much that cost the county. So if they want to be forthcoming with that information, that's fine. If they don't, then we'll, I, I will proceed with my resolutions to uh declare those seats vacant and uh if I don't get the votes, that's fine as well. But I think they should be answering that question. So that's all I have under Old Business, Mr. McGinley.
May, uh, excuse me, I just, uh, I have a question, Councilman Griffith, because I, I want to help move this uh process along. Uh, there was information that was sent in March. Is there something different that you want other than that information?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, what, what, what I, what we got in March was from the uh Paula Lipinski, I believe her last name is, I apologize for not saying her name properly, but she sent to us the members of the board who actually participated in a tuition waiver. However, the tuition waiver agreement that that board, the members that were on that board approved stated that the board member and/or their family members, immediate family members can get that waiver. So the question that I followed up with was obviously, so of those board members that took the waiver, how many of their family members also got the waiver? I've, I, I'm under the understanding that there are members of their families that got full tuition reimbursements for their entire associate's degree, but I don't know if that's true, but I would like to know if that cost the county money or not. So if it, if it is, that's fine.
Let's, Ms. Crump, will you check that out, please?
Yes, yes, I, I, I just, I want to just clarify so we can streamline this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I know, I know it was a little confusing, so I appreciate you clarifying that for me. Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Moving down to agenda item number one.
Mr. McGinley, I have.
Adopting two thousand twenty-two long-range operational fiscal and capital plan for Luzerne County. And as noted in the parentheses there, it has to be introduced by June first and we have uh several months to look at it, but it must be approved by September one or it becomes the budget plan for the long range. So this is an introduction of an ordinance that the manager's gonna introduce, deals with budgets. So he is automatically introducing it. It does not require four votes to have the introduction. Uh, Mr. Pedri, do you want to introduce this, please?
Council, uh, it's my honor to introduce the uh, the next year's uh capital budget. Obviously, uh, as we've stated in the past numerous times, capital uh funds are quickly dwindling. Uh, I applauded uh council's amendment uh made earlier this year to put in the cyber attack money into the capital fund. Uh, the two projects uh that our engineering uh group is asking for, it deals with uh Brominsky Building repairs. Neither of these two repairs are eligible under the American Rescue Plan. Uh, so these are the only two projects that we are asking to add to the um, to the capital projects for next year. Uh, Mr. O'Neill is on the call. He's available over the next three months uh to answer any and all questions along with Mr. Plesh. Uh, if you would like to add something as well, that's your decision as, as council members, uh, if you see something else, but administration only believes that these two projects should be reviewed at this time.
Do we have any questions? Any questions? Like I said, this will be on our work session. You'll see it appear on work several, several times over the next several months. There'll be an opportunity to ask any questions that regard, talk about any other projects that may be considered, but we have to finalize it by September first or last meeting in August, we'll be looking to approve the plan.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
This, uh, Chris?
Yes.
Can I ask Mr. O'Neill a question, please?
Absolutely. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, I am available, counsel.
Um, Ed, uh, can you tell us a little bit about the uh, the road that you, I see, if I get my magnifying glass out, uh, Crestwood Drive and also Church Road. Uh, this is uh on a list for the MPO. Could you tell us a little bit about that and where we're at with that?
Well, those, those roadways are listed under the road and bridge projects uh attached to the capital plan. Those roads were recently added and although it indicates MPO, uh, that, that should be further clarified. Those roads were added within the last month as a result of the infrastructure funding that is being handed down by the federal government. Representative Cartwright's office came to us and asked if there were projects that we felt uh were worthy of, of funding, that they could seek um from the federal government. So we submitted those two roads along with Lower Demons Road and a bridge in Sleepy Hollow uh as eligible projects that fell in, into the jurisdiction of Representative Cartwright and were also county-owned.
Thanks, Ed. I appreciate it. And Mr. McGinley, I gotta say one more thing. Uh, Mr. O'Neill has been uh absolutely great in uh answering many questions over the past couple of weeks about funding for roads. I know I've been contacted by a lot of people up here in Mountain Top, but I just want you to know that he is uh, did a great job in explaining the complex uh, uh, the complexity of, of the issue of roads and he was excellent. So thank you there, Mr..
Perry, I, I just would like to add one thing with regard to those projects. Um, we're, we're very hopeful that when, when that does come through, that we will hopefully be able to fund, if not all, at least a few of those projects. There are four listed. Um, but I do want to just mention, um, for those who may be listening and um, you know, hopeful that we've been, we've been given indications that that funding will not be available until probably early next year. So that, that is not a short-term thing that we expect to get funding for, but hopefully maybe this time next year, we, we look at, be looking at putting those projects out to bid if they are funded.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you. Moving down to number two, motion to adopt the ordinance, implementing the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year budget, Luzerne County, and that is the ERA program, which we just had the public hearing on. We introduced this the last meeting, so this would be the final reading. Do we have a motion?
Present it, Snee.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
that may be considered, but we have to finalize it by September 1st or last meeting in August. We'll be looking to approve the plan.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Can I ask Mr. O'Neal a question, please?
Absolutely. Mr. O'Neal?
Yes, I am available, counsel.
Um, Ed, uh, can you tell us a little bit about the, uh, the road that you, I see, if I get my magnifying glass out, uh, Crestwood Drive and also Church Road. Uh, this is, uh, on a list for the MPO. Can you tell us a little bit about that and where we're at with that?
Well, those, those roadways are listed under the road and bridge projects, uh, attached to the capital plan. Those roads were recently added, and although it indicates MPO, uh, that, that should be further clarified. Those roads were added within the last month as a result of the infrastructure funding that is being handed down by the federal government. Representative Cartwright's office came to us and asked if there were projects that we felt, uh, were worthy of, of funding, that they could seek, um, from the federal government. So we submitted those two roads, along with Lower Demons Road and a bridge in Sleepy Hollow, uh, as eligible projects that fell in, into the jurisdiction of Representative Cartwright and were also county-owned.
Thanks, Ed. I appreciate it. And Mr. McGinley, I guess I say one more thing. Uh, Mr. O'Neal has been, uh, absolutely great in, uh, answering many questions over the past couple of weeks about funding for roads. I know I've been contacted by a lot of people up here in Mountain Top, but I just want you to know that he is, uh, did a great job in explaining the complex, uh, uh, the complexity of, of the issue of roads, and he was excellent. So thank you there, Mr..
Mr. Perry, I, I just would like to add one thing with regard to those projects. Um, we're, we're very hopeful that when, when that does come through, that we will hopefully be able to fund, if not all, at least a few of those projects. There are four listed. Um, but I do want to just mention, um, for those who may be listening and, um, you know, hopeful, that we've been, we've been given indications that that funding will not be available until probably early next year. So that, that is not a short-term thing that we expect to get funding for, but hopefully maybe this time next year, we, we look at, be looking at putting those projects out to bid if they are funded.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neal.
Thank you. Moving down to number two. Motion to adopt the ordinance, admitting in 2021 fiscal year budget, Luzerne County, and that is the ERA program, which we just had the public hearing on. We introduced this the last meeting, so this would be the final reading. Do we have a motion?
Presented.
Mr. Snee, do we have a second?
Second. Sheila.
Who's that?
Sheila.
Sheila, very good. Ms. Sedman. On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Hoss?
Abstained for aforementioned reasons.
Hoss is absent. Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Just a point of clarification. This is on which the pen placed one?
No, this is on the rental assistance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, on that one.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Nine yes, one abstention.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to number three. Motion to adopt the ordinance, admitting in 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County, and this is under the general fund. If you remember, this is the, um, $73,000 from the Crime Commission. Do we have a motion?
Presented, Sheila.
Ms. Sedman, do we have a second from Ms. Sedman?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hoss? Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
unanimous, 10, 0.
Very good. Number four, motion to adopt the ordinance, admitting in 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. This is the money under the drug and alcohol. Do we have a motion?
So, Perry, Vog.
Mr. Perry, second, and Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Very good. On the question? Roll call, please.
McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman?
My, my mic keeps going.
We can hear you now.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Very good. Moving down to number five. Motion to introduce an ordinance, admitting in 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. And this is from the, I think it's actually the American Rescue Act. Do we have a motion?
Presented.
Well, we had a couple people chime in there. Mr. Snee, I think, was one, correct?
Yes.
Who was second?
I'll second it. Kendra.
Okay, Ms. Radel. On the question, I want to ask Mr. Swets to give us a little bit of update on this, please.
Sure, thanks, Mr. McGinley. So this is the American Rescue Plan money. Uh, as in the email that was sent to all of council, we received $56 million, uh, which was roughly half of the money. Uh, this goes on for four years. It will end in four years from now. Uh, currently, the money was received, and when we receive the money, we're only allowed to use funds that we currently have. So that would be either in human services or in the general fund. Uh, I asked for this to go on for introduction, to get it out of the general fund, uh, as soon as possible and into its own fund. Uh, I had a conversation with Adam Harzl of Baker Tilly, who basically said that this is like CARES funding round two. Uh, a lot of the uses are similar to the first fund. At this point, it can't be used for infrastructure, as there's talk of a separate infrastructure bill. Uh, it was not put under Division 99 because, as we just talked about, the capital plan, which is under Division 50, so it's not really the division that controls council, uh, having, say, over the money. So at the auditor's recommendation, we used the same fund and added some accounts, and we have no problem with council having control of this account.
Very good. We have a motion in a second?
On, on the question, Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Swet, on that line item 125-20, you just said that we could not use, uh, Division 99, uh, and it had something to do with, what was the reason why we couldn't put it in council?
Sure, so council can have control. We, it's not that we can, it's that it's not required. So when we do, we just read today, and we just introduced it, obviously, the capital plan, which all that stuff is in Division 50. So if we added a division, which I understand we use for the general fund, then we have to set up, uh, access to reports. Uh, it's really more worth than we felt and the auditors felt was necessary. We have no problem with council having control of this money. So we just felt to use the 12520, which was the same setup that we use for the CARES funding, because the parameters at this time are very similar to the CARES funding.
Well, how does council have control over the money if it's in your, if it's in the executive branch's, uh, budget?
We would, I, I would envision that we would present something similar to the capital plan, where we would come and staff projects. Uh, I don't foresee anybody in administration going out to look and have checks. Uh, at this point, we just got the regulations a few weeks ago. We just got the money. Uh, obviously, we want to help as many people as possible. Uh, myself and other staff have been on webinars, so I would think that we would come to council and say, this is a list of projects, and council would approve them, same process as the capital plan.
So I would sugge, I would suggest that if it's not going to be under the quote-unquote "control" of council, that we need to have a resolution that says any money that's removed from this account has to come before council then. Because that's obviously, listen, we're all not going to be here forever. Some of us may die someday, uh, myself included. So I don't see how we could just say. Pardon me?
I said, I'm not looking to die now.
No, but you know what? Four, four or five years from now, you know, there's going to be a whole different people sitting in these chairs, and I want to make sure that, uh, whoever's sitting in the chair is a manager, as well as budget and finance, or anybody else, does not have the ability to just take that money and use it for whatever they want without oversight. And right now, nobody has oversight. I mean, I appreciate the fact that right now we would, but in the future, we would not. So I think a resolution would be in order for council to, uh, make sure that any money to come out of this fund are approved by council.
Uh, somebody has their microphone open. Mr. Griffith, I think we could do that by some language in the, um, budget amendment.
Well, yeah, maybe we could amend the budget amendment, but there we pass.
Yeah, and this is just the introduction, so we'll have something done for the next meeting.
Oh, this is just an introduction we need to vote on?
Yes, it is, sir. It's an introduction.
Oh, okay, so, so we're not voting to adopt this?
No.
This is actually voting to be adopted, right?
No.
We've already introduced it.
Introduction, that's all.
No, this is a new one, Mr. Griffith. This is an introduction. I asked that it wouldn't be put on the work session because it still needed to go through this meeting and another meeting, and we'd like to get it into its own fund and out of the general fund in four weeks instead of six weeks, but we're not voting on it. It's just to be introduced.
Right, so we're just looking for the four votes on us then.
That's right.
Okay, okay, thanks for the clarity. I appreciate that.
Yep.
On the question, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Hoss.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Swet, I appreciate you sent the email out on May 11th, right after the council meeting. Uh, it was entitled, "The Interim Final Rule," and those, those are the federal guidelines passed down to the, the counties and the local municipalities. Are, are there any other documents that are commanding for this usage of funds, or is that, is that it?
At this point, that's. Yeah, at, at this point, that's it. And as I said in our conversation with the auditor, it's very similar, even though the document's not, to the initial CARES funding, uh, except that other municipalities and other cities and boroughs got their own money, where, and obviously, in the CARES funding, you know, the county passed money through, the county got money in American Rescue, and so did municipalities. So at this point, it's very similar. Uh, that's all the documentation we have. As I said, we've been on calls and will continue to be on calls. Uh, if we get any kind of final rulings or any updates, I'll gladly share any PDFs we get with all of council.
Yeah, I'm sure that our members read it, but I mean, there, there is so much fluff in it. I mean, I think they could have shortened the document to like 10%. Here's what you got, here's what you can use it for, but, you know, they get poetic. So I just wanted to know if there was any other, like a, a matrix or some kind of spreadsheet or something, but we'll look through it again. And so I'm, I'm just assuming that any time if we wanted to suggest some programming for these funds, we could just bring that, once this is introduced, and put up for a council vote. I think you said through ordinance, I believe.
Well, this is an ordinance, Mr. Hoss, but I think.
Right, to introduce it.
My thoughts are, as we go forward with this, and, you know, decide on where it's going to be spent, we should have a plan that would come to council and be approved by council, and then that would be the plan they would use to dispense with the, the monies. So that's why, that's the way I envision it.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Very good. We had a motion for Mr. Snee, second by Ms. Radel, to introduce this ordinance. As indicated, we need four votes to introduce it. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Hoss?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
10 yes, 0 no.
Number six, motion to adopt a resolution providing tax exemption for new constructions in deteriorated areas under the Local Economic Reviolation Tax Assistance Act. And this would be the request from the developer, which is North Point. Do we have a motion?
Presented.
Presented, Mr. Snee. Do we have a second?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry? On the question?
On the question, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, when the representatives for North Point addressed this last meeting, I, I made some suggestions that they'd be willing to change up, number one, change up the abatement schedule for the LERTA, and number two, if they had any more guarantees about adhering to the original assessed value rather than what we always see with these kind of things, whereas suddenly the estimated revenue coming in after the abatement period's over runs out, and they, and they change it up, and we end up losing on the, on the county taxpayer. And so I don't know if the representative or representatives could speak to those two things. I, I read through the paperwork, I didn't see any changes, but maybe they could clarify something.
Well, there is, uh, one change in the abatement schedule. Mr. Hoss, if you remember the, um, presentation two weeks ago, it was, uh, zero for the first seven years, 10%, 20%, 30% on the last three years. If you looked at the new, uh, information, there's a new abatement schedule. The first year is 10%, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh are all at 10%, and it goes 20, 30, 40. So there was a, a change in that schedule, which would provide, um, more tax dollars to Luzerne County. Uh, as far as the assessment question, I think Attorney Stahl will answer that last time, that that's a constitutional right, so I don't know if there's any additional, anyone else who's on the line from, um, North Point, representation that would like to comment on any of those.
Commissioner McGinley, this is Brent Miles with North Point. Good evening.
Very good.
How are you?
Thank you, Mr. Miles, for being on with us.
Yeah, good, good, seeing everyone and, and hearing from everyone. I'll, I'll take, um, Commissioner Hoss, Commissioner Hoss, good evening. How are you?
Hi, Mr. Miles. Welcome back virtually to Woodbury.
Yeah, for sure. We, I don't think I've seen you guys virtually, so hope you're well. Um, I'll take the first question. I'll let Attorney Stahl take the second.
Very good.
I, I would say I couldn't, I was in travel, and I apologize, I couldn't be in the, in the first one. I just, there was not a flight that missed the hearing, so I apologize, I couldn't be virtually on. But, you know, heard loud and clear that I'm trying to change the abatement schedule. Obviously, as you know, we've, and we've invested over a half billion dollars here. We want to invest more. We, we, we're proud of our investment. We're proud of the projects we've done. Um, I, I want you to know that we were not successful without you. You've been a major factor in our success, so I'm not tone deaf to that. And so what I did was, uh, you know, after talking with Attorney Stahl after the hearing and presented it back through, through the, through the ranks here, I changed the abatement schedule. By our calculation, that's an additional $575,000 to you all. I'm not going to go through the benefits of the projects and job. We know those, right? We know what we've invested. We know the jobs we've created. I know that there are some that always have concern about, are you getting your fair care? Um, you know, we've never, the schedule that you have before you tonight, um, we have not had on any of the previous seven. We started with, with a different schedule. We had the Koz plus LERTA, if you remember, in the first three buildings. Then I watered that down for the next, well, it would be six buildings. And now these new two, one in Newport Township, one in Hanover Township, I've taken it down even further. So that's an additional 57, $575,000 with those changes that I presented. So knew specifically that that was something you were going to ask. That's why I wanted to be on tonight and wanted you to hear. It relates to the appraisal issue. I think, I'll let Attorney Stahl take that. I think Brian's on, but I think there are some challenges with that from a legal perspective. And so that, that wasn't us not listening to you. I think there were some challenges with that from a legal perspective. I wanted to at least answer the first question.
Sure, and, and thank you, Brent. And that's right, Councilman Hoss, it is a, it's a issue of Pennsylvania constitutionality. Um, taxpayers cannot be required to waive their constitutional right of appeal, uh, the way that the Pennsylvania Constitution is written, so, uh, you know, it's, it's a, it would be void if it were included in the resolution.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I appreciate that, and I, you know, understand in Pennsylvania, we have uniformated our tax policies here, and we got to understand by the nature of these LERTAs and Koz's, we're changing that. We're going against the Constitution because we're actually giving the developer an abatement. We're telling them they don't have to pay taxes, either in, in part or in whole. So I just think it's good faith to say, hey, look, this is what we're estimating here is going to be the costs, or the, the yields, rather, for, um, for the taxpayers, and, um, we just want to make sure that they're accurate, because we keep on seeing time and time again they're not. So, um, um, I guess, I, I guess that's my answer, though. I, I, I get, I get how the process goes. Not my first rodeo. Um, what I do appreciate, though, um, uh, Mr. Miles, thank you for, for coming to the table and actually offering $575,000 more dollars.
That's really helpful and that, that makes me, not that I need to be shined, but I feel like I, I'm listened to. And doing my job and I, I, that doesn't normally happen. Usually it's been a take it or leave it with these kind of things, so I personally appreciate you. As we talked about the dimes and, and nickels back in the day, the last time you all were here. I, I guess the last thing I want to say to protect again the, the taxpayers. Trammell Crowe came here, they, they um, made a similar deal. And then they immediately divested the property and made $7 million just off the, the increased value that council gave through the abatement program. Any assurances that, that North Point will not be doing that?
I think if you look at what we've done to date, you know, I think, and you may know this. The true value built in this retail building, um, we actually sold. And I've told you, we're long-term holders, our investor there wanted to sell. And I think what it, what is important to remember is that I didn't opt to sell. I actually found a replacement for that capital and brought them in. So we transacted, you got a, you got a nice, everybody got a nice transfer tax and a bump, bump up in IU. But I stayed in the deal and like I told you from the beginning, we're not Trammell Crowe. I don't buy ground and I don't flip it, I don't get it entitled and flip it, that's not what I do. I build buildings because I believe in the long-term. I think, as you know, and I've brought up several times, I brought Northwestern Mutual and as my partner on the Chewy Patagonia and Adidas buildings. You know, I know this happened, I was on site. When you had your bond rating and your bond raters heard what I had invested. And I was at maybe 250, 300 million at that point in your, in Luzerne County and told them. I had a 20-year, and I think it was 25-year perm debt with Northwestern Mutual. There was an assurance, right? That's the gold standard. And so I've not done what Trammell Crowe has done, I've not flipped any of my buildings, I stayed in them. What percentage I was my original investor, I'm still in the tru- true value in the, in this retail building, the one in Nanticoke. I'm building two more buildings, three and four, I filled buildings five and six. I've got an investor, a, a, a new investor for a long-term hold on what we call Bliss one and two. The one in Newport Township and one in Hanover Township. So I'm not done with those people said. And actually, if you remember, that was your number one concern, the very first time I talked to you. Was, hey, you're going to be the next Trammell.
Was.
And if you remember, what I said was, and I don't remember the exact number, I said, I'll put up $200,000 or something like that. And I said, if I don't pull permit, you can keep it.
It was actually 100,000, but you're correct.
Hundred. So you know, the way they make money, I'm not going to discount the way Crowe does business and how they make money. It's just not what I do. My goal is, I want to build a building for the future and I want to have a tenant for the future and I want to be in that for a really long time. And with, if you look at the presentation that we presented, you know, if you look at what we've invested to date. We've invested a half a billion, we're at a half a billion between us and our tenants. And I think our job number is low, I mean, all of you have heard the number that Chewy, some of you have seen it, where Chewy's at. I think, I think at the end of the day, with these two buildings, if we're not cresting over 3,500 or 4,000 jobs. I, I think we will, I think we're going to crest 3,000 before we even get to these two new buildings. So I'm happy what, what we done. Harry, I'm, Commissioner Haas, I mean this sincerely, like you guys have been a partner of ours. We don't, we did not make this success on our own. LERTA has been a factor. As we compete with other parts of PA and parts of Jersey and other parts across the country, we know LERTA is a major factor. And that's been the big factor in our success and you're a part of that. So I don't want to be tone deaf to your request and try to meet you as best I could to still be successful.
Now, and I know you got a job to do and I, I'll, I'll leave you with this and, and thank you again, thank you, thank you very much. Came, went down the I-81 corridor over the weekend, all, all the way down to the Maryland border. And you know, Cumberland County, um, down there, uh, what's the next one down? Franklin County goes right through Chambersburg there, place is exploding with the development. And again, I, I just want us to be aware that. Again, it, we have, this is an opportunity, okay? So I think with all these kind of abatement programs, I'm talking more to my colleagues here. We need, we just need to get the best deal possible because the, these are going fast. I think we have, again, a place of strength to negotiate because people want to develop these properties right off the, the highway. Right all the way down, all the way through the I-81. So um, but thanks, Mr. Miles, appreciate that and I'll yield, yield my time, you're the floor, thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Miles?
Who was speaking, please?
Bobby Sniff.
Go ahead, Mr. Snead.
Mr. Miles, first of all, you're a first-class person and the people that you represent are first-class. Wha- what you've done in Hanover Township. It, 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 it's just amazing because going back to the background, other developers tried to put uh, buildings there and did not succeed. You went, you went through, there would nothing ever, ever be built there if you didn't tackle this task. And you tackled this task in a first-class manner from the first time you ever came in front of council. And you put first-class buildings up and you provided employment for our local people. And I just want to thank you and your, your people that you are first-class and thank you for everything.
Yep. Well, thank you, Commissioner. I, I think many of you know this, this property, this Bliss property in particular. Was under contract for about two years with, with another developer that they just could not get closed on. And, and I hope everybody takes this as a compliment. I, I jokingly said to Sam Gusto, the township manager, I said. Hanover and Luzerne County, it's not for amateurs, you're going to know what you're doing up here. As you deal with this old mine, mine scarred land, as you deal with um, the redevelopment of that. How to market it, what size of building? This is not for amateurs and, and I'm, and this is not against Commissioner Haas. We have projects all along the 81 corridor, South 81 corridor has exploded. How do we get the fair share for the North 81 corridor as well, right? Scranton, Wilkes-Barre, Hanover, Newport Township, Nanticoke. And that's, we've, we've always taken the risk of building big buildings specula without a tenant. And it takes a lot of capital to do that, it takes a lot of guts to do it. And, but it takes a lot of data and we've been proven time and time again that we made the right decision. I know we've had great, you know, county support, we've had great school district support. And obviously we've got both of the school districts approved here. And labor, we've, you know, I think we've done a really good job with labor and local labor and how we interact with those groups. So I'm proud of what we've done together.
Thank you, anyone else?
Mr. McGinley, it's Walter.
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Miles, thanks for attending the meeting, it's uh, Councilman Griffith. Really appreciate all the work that you've done in Hanover Township. I drive quite a bit, quite every day and, and it's, it's very impressed at that site. Uh, I, I, I have to say that, I have to give uh, Councilman Haas some kudos here. I mean, his simple question yielded the county 575,000 just by asking and you being willing to, to go along and help us a little bit along the way. So I do appreciate your willingness to help. I do appreciate Mr. Haas' uh, uh, ability to ask the question. And, and you know, with all due respect, I think there was a, it's something that needed, you know, 575,000 dollars is a lot of money to a lot of people in this county. So it's helpful for us, uh, maybe in the big scheme of things, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not that big of a deal. But I do appreciate you uh, working with us for that um, extra money. The question that I have is in the contract in, in 3.4, it says the exemption from taxes granted under the resolution does not terminate upon. The sale or exchange of the property. And you just made a statement that, you know, you, you have no intentions of doing that. And I, certainly your track record proves that you won't do that. My question is that would, would, would you be amenable to us taking that out? I mean, you don't have any ability to, I mean, you, you've demonstrated over the years that you don't uh, you know, you don't have a desire to buy property and then turn around and sell it like Trammell Crowe did. And I'm not insinuating you're in any fashion the same caliber as Trammell Crowe because you're certainly not. But that clause that's in there gives that openness to anybody to buy the property and, and, and get the reward for that. And I was just wondering if you'd be amenable to taking that out of the contract.
Sure, I, I, I'm sure, you know, Attorney Stahl can give you some, some legal reasons. One, one, you know, just what I would call simplistic reason that I prefer that language and, and really require it is from a, you know, financing standpoint. Which is, just look at the example I gave with the true value in spree tail buildings, which is technically that transferred. You know, that transferred to a new entity. Now, I happen to be the same controlling member and manager of that entity. But without that ability, you know, and things happen, like that financier that was in it was a, well, was a, you know, private investor, a private individual. They had a, um, they had a capital event that was related, honestly related to COVID and other things that he was in and is an investor, hotels and retail. So he needed to, to cash out and I could bring another investor in. So the challenge with that, and that isn't that I'm not doing what I'm saying I'm going to do, the challenge with that is it limits me if something like that happens. That I, like, I, I developed it, I managed it and I don't want to be harmed if I have to replace my capital and that capital is getting. Replaced with somebody even bigger, right, that isn't having that same financial issue.
I understand and, and that's a, that's a, a logical explanation and I appreciate the clarity on that because. And I, I get it, I mean, you know, you have somebody who wants to buy the building, it's a certain, it's a certain, you, you've already invested the money to develop the land. You've already invested the money to build the building and somebody comes along and wants to pay a couple million dollars for a property. And you can't sell it because you have no, no out clause in your contract, I get it. So uh, I appreciate you explaining that to me as well as other, as well as my colleagues, so thank you so much for that, appreciate it.
Anyone else? I just have one comment, um, many of us on council have seen Mr. Myers several times, usually in person, but tonight virtually. And I think by their work here in the county, particularly you've seen that they've been a very great partner to the county. To the school districts and the municipalities in which these developments have occurred. And I greatly appreciate the fact that he was able to adjust the abatement set, schedule, which will allow us to. Uh, derive more revenue from that particular development at this time. So I want to thank Mr. Myers for doing that and bringing it back to council. And I think at this point, we're ready for a roll call. Mr. Lawrence, please.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee? Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Miles, you want me over, yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Mr. Haas, the second LERTA that's approved by unanimous vote, so congratulations.
I got, I got Harry, thank you, Commissioner.
All right, thank you.
Thanks again.
Moving down to number seven. Motion to introduce the ordinance, amending Luzerne County Administrative Code. Article six, the office and divisional responsibilities. This was the only part of the administrative code that's included in this particular ordinance. And you can see there's two different attachments, one the redline attachment, one the final copy. Uh, spoke with Ms. Hauken in regards to this and she did the bulk of the work uh, to put this together. She has had no communications from anyone on council after our work session two weeks ago. So that's why it's on the agenda this evening and this is just the introduction. So obviously, there's another round of votes involved with this. And of course, we'll have a public hearing also. So at this time, we need four votes to introduce the ordinance. We have a motion to introduce the ordinance.
So move, Walter.
Walder?
Yes.
Hold on a second.
Second, Urban.
Okay, we'll, we'll get, Mr. Urban? On the question?
Yes.
Roll call?
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee? Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, it's introduced, like I said, it'll be a public hearing and a second round of voting. Down to number eight, motion to adopt the resolution, second amendment sanctuary county declaration. We have a motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
And that's Mr. Haas, do we have a second?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? On the question?
On the question?
Go ahead, Mr. Snead.
This resolution, this, this is just reaffirming the second amendment, correct? This is the uh, Solicitor Crocamo.
Mr. Crocamo or Mr. DeLuca?
Yes, I, I, the resolution uh, is reaffirming the second amendment in the Pennsylvania constitution. And uh, the language makes it uh, symbolic. Uh, otherwise, we would be dealing with uh, a, a, a concept called preemption where you have federal laws and state laws. So uh, yes, uh, Councilman Schnee, this is uh, consistent with the uh, United States Constitution and the Pennsylvania Constitution.
Okay, so state laws, federal laws will still trump whatever is going on.
Correct, the, the United States Constitution will trumpet uh, this and the Pennsylvania Constitution.
Background check to obtain a firearm.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
My only other question is, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Walsh, that Mr. McGinley read off.
Right.
Concerning uh, removable firearms in domestic dispute and PFAs, that would still remain the same.
I, I, if I could just uh, add, I, I, I don't, this has been a subject, obviously, that there's uh. Different opinions on as far as uh, whether it's advisable or not advisable. And as far as from a legal perspective, I don't believe and I agree with Attorney Crocamo. It doesn't actually have any true legal effect. The reading that I've done, uh, and, and actually I think uh, some of the emails sort of uh, on one side versus the other. Uh, have sort of revealed uh, the debate on this, uh, on this topic. I think the concern uh, that, that some have is that it could create confusion. I don't, um, I don't have an opinion one way or another that, other than it, it has absolutely no true legal effect. I don't know whether um, you have received some email I've, I heard. Or some um, communication from some of the other municipalities that make up uh, Luzerne County. I truly would have been interested, uh, if, I think it should be important um. To, to get law enforcement's take on this as to uh, whether or not they believe uh, that it could create an issue or not. Again, it truly, I don't believe it has any real legal effect. Whether or not it's something that could create confusion is uh, is a real concern, I guess I would say. I'm not in law enforcement, uh, so I don't, I can't speak for uh, law enforcement's position on it. But it, it might be helpful to get uh, some input from local law enforcement. Uh, as to whether or not they perceive this as a, as a problem or not.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, it's Chris. Um, let me throw, throw my two cents in. Way back in 1971, you know, that's 50 years ago, I joined Pennsylvania Army National Guard. And uh, I spent five months basic training and uh, AIT. Fired weapons from the M-16 and we used the M-16 then, it wasn't the M-14. Fired the M-60 machine gun, the M-50 machine gun to law. Uh, and during the last 25 years after that, we had to qualify with the M-16. So I, I must have shot thousands of rounds through the M-16. Do I own a weapon now? No, I don't. Uh, uh, I don't because I don't want to, but if I want to, the second amendment allows me to. So I always supported it, I'm an army veteran and I will support this, this resolution. Thank you.
Okay.
On the question, Mr.? Yes, Sheila.
Go ahead.
You know, from two weeks ago, when this was first brought up, I am not in favor of this resolution. Basically because it means nothing, there's no point in it, it's a purely political matter. That has been created by the Republican Party and the NRA. It is, it has caused confusion in other areas where sheriffs have not enforced gun laws. And there are many gun laws, the second amendment is, has many limitations on it, many. And to put out something like this, where people think there are no limits on their gun control, I think is very confusing. I am not in favor of this amendment, I saw many people write in for us to vote it through. And I have nothing against people hunting, owning guns. I just want it to be with the understanding that there are laws out there, there make, may be more laws eventually. There have been terrible mass shootings in the last couple of months, terrible. And we can talk about mental health being an issue, but ultimately, I think, just like cigarettes cause lung cancer. I think you have to think that what causes death in this situation, it's the gun. It's the assault weapon that has no need to be used in hunting or anything else except the military. So they are my feelings, I hope some of you uh, also believe in them.
Anyone else on council?
Yeah, Mr. McGinley? Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Ms. Radel.
So, um, Ms. Sedman made a comment that it was created by the Republican Party and, and, I mean, it's a pro-second amendment declaration, so it probably. it's a pro-Second Amendment declaration, so it probably was created by someone from the Republican Party. I just disagree with the fact that county council is voting on something like this right now. The fact that we are all forced to take a side, whether we're pro-Second Amendment or, and not necessarily against the Second Amendment, but I think it's just creating a divisiveness that doesn't need to be created on the county level, especially because the declaration doesn't necessarily have any teeth. It's basically just, we're making a, a statement about, like a partisan statement in one way or the other. So, I don't know, I just don't believe this should be brought to council. I don't think it's a county issue. I think it's, the Second Amendment is something way larger than just Luzerne County Council voting on a declaration. I'm pro-Second Amendment. I'll support the declaration. I just don't support that it's even brought to us, because it was just brought to us to create a divisiveness that we don't need in an already divisive climate.
Thank you. Or someone else who's trying to speak?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes. I support the Second Amendment 100%. I support the NRA, and as Ms. Radel said, this actually should not be brought up. Well said, Mrs. Radel. Ms. Radel.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My name is Greg Brandon. I am from Wright Township.
No, Mr. Brandon, this is council only, please. Sorry. Mr. Brandon? Mr. Brandon, excuse me. Mr. Brandon? Mr. Brandon? Mr. Brandon? Mr. Brandon, excuse me. This is for council only at this point? Any member of council? If not, I just have a couple of comments, and then we'll proceed to the vote. First of all, this is a resolution which really has only symbolic information at best. Certainly does not have any enforcement. Numbers, number two, I think every member of the county council and any elected office throughout the Commonwealth has sworn to uphold the Second, the Constitution of the United States and the Second Amendment. And I firmly believe that you swear to, to that, and you should follow that. And I don't think it's necessary to have a resolution to declare that. We've already declared that by swearing. Also, you know, Butler Township, which I firmly believe is a municipality and has every right to do whatever they believe is correct for their municipality. They are one of 76 municipalities throughout our county. I think it's important that we listen to the majority of people, majority of the municipalities across our county. And if we have a majority that wishes to have action of this nature, I think that's the time to consider a resolution of this type. So those are my thoughts, and we'll now proceed with the vote. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Vog?
I support the Second Amendment, but this has no teeth, so no.
Mr. Griffith?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
No, because I do believe that if we make an exception on the Bill of Rights with the Second Amendment, then what, will we be putting together declarations on all the other ones? I mean, I think what Mr. McGinley said is correct. Yeah, no.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Three no, seven yes.
Motion carries. Moving down to number nine, motion to allow Alan and Brenda Q. To advertise their intent to purchase 27 parcels of county-owned property and a newspaper of general circulation for a 10-day period, and there's a packet that was attached to this information. We have a motion.
So moved, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, do we have a second for Ms. McDermott?
Second, Vog.
Mr. Vog? On the question. Ms. McDermott, you want to begin the discussion here?
This is 27 parcels, that is, in Dallas Township. We discussed it at the last meeting. What they're going to do is advertise the 27 parcels. I don't know if anyone took a look at that ad. It does have all 27 parcels listed in there, and for the sum of $500 each. Any objections, or the sale must be filed with Luzerne County Court of Common, please, within 10 days of this notice.
Am I correct in saying we've talked about this several times during the course of some work sessions?
We had it in the Real Estate Committee meeting, and we had it on the last work session in April.
Okay.
There, there was quite a bit of information that I included, the zoning from Dallas, maps of the parcels showing, you know, that the parcels are not touching, they still have a lot more parcels to purchase. Each parcel is not buildable according to the Dallas zoning, so they are, you know, they're just too small. So they do have to purchase a bunch of parcels to be able to put them together, and they still do have to work on adjacent properties.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, Ms. McGinley?
Go ahead.
Just a question, does anybody have a conflict of interest in this, to take this vote?
You may have a conflict of interest.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, sir.
I, I have a conflict of interest on this vote. Brenda and Alan Q. are big supporters of the Republican Party, as well as myself, and so therefore, I probably will be abstaining from this vote.
All right, don't hear anyone else? Okay, other questions? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
We're going to vote no.
Mr. Vog?
Yes.
Mr. Griffith?
Abstain.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radel?
Yes.
Ms. Sedman?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no, and one abstention.
Thank you. Motion carries. Down to number 10, this is the resolution that Mr. Urban permitted. I'll read the title of that. The resolution, Luzerne County Council, the request in an investigation of the May 18, 2021 primary election by the Luzerne County District Attorney's Office. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Walter.
Mr. Griffith, do we have a second for Mr. Griffith?
Second, Urban.
Mr. Urban? On the question?
I have a comment, Mr. McGinley.
Yes, go ahead. Who's that?
Matt Vog.
Go ahead, Matt.
I just wanted to clarify, I voted for yes, to add this to the agenda, because I think it's definitely worth something talking about what, after what happened last week. But I voted yes to support this, not because I think there's any criminal intent, but to have that discussion. I don't think there's anything criminal done, but I just think Dominion is really bad at their job, and we need to consider getting rid of them and look at the steps to take that action.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, go ahead.
No, I would like to agree with Mr. Vog completely. And I voted no originally, but if there's a possibility, I could change it, because I do believe that Dominion has done a very poor job, and we have to get to the bottom of actually what happened. We can't afford another election to cause this confusion. We just can't affect. I, I personally, and I think I told, the person who told me about it the day I found out that the heading on the Republican ballot was for the Democrats, and even though the names were correct, I'll tell you, I, I don't know if I would have voted as a Republican. So I think that it, it was a disastrous election, and, and I would like to change my vote.
Well, you're going to get a chance to vote through.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, right now.
I, I, I just want to clarify, I'm, I'm actually going to be voting no. I don't think there's any criminal intent, and I think that's the purpose of the DA, but us as a council should look into Dominion's contract and see what we need to do to get out of it.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
If I, if I can clarify, I don't, I don't know if there's been criminal activity, and I, I don't surmise there was. But the district attorney can certainly do an investigation and come back with that finding, but we have no power to do any kind of investigation into what actually did happen. Last night, they said it was a human error, and, and I have no reason to doubt that that was in fact a human error. My question and the reason for the investigation is, we need to give the voters of this county confidence in their election process. If we just say, well, you know what, we're going to accept the fact that they said it's a human error, and not get any kind of, no, no, can't get any kind of substantiation to that claim, then I think we're doing a disservice to the people of this county. I think they deserve to have answers as to what happened. I think the district attorney can investigate and come back with a finding and say, no criminal activity. They do that at the prison all the time. There's no, we do investigations as to how people die at the prison, and they come back and they stay there with no criminal activity. That's fine. We don't throw our hands in the air and say, hey, you know, so-and-so died at the prison, we're not going to have the DA investigate. The DA investigates anything that is a possible crime or not. So I think this resolution is appropriate for the district attorney to determine that, no, nothing criminal did happen. It gives clarity to Dominion, it gives clarity to the board, it gives clarity to the management, it gives clarity to everybody. And for us to not approve a resolution of this nature, just, I think, doesn't disturb it to the people of this county.
Anyone else on council? Yes.
Yeah, Mr. McGinley, it's Sheila again, and when I asked Mr. Griffith at the beginning if he thought there was criminal intent, knowing that, you know, really, that's what the DA's office does in terms of looking at crimes. But there are crimes that are, do not have criminal intent, and also, there's negligence. And I would like to find out who was negligent, and what is the action that we, if any, are going to take regarding the negligence of whoever it was.
And I think the district attorney can bring that in. I'm sorry, Mr. McGinley.
Someone else has, had, was trying to chime in.
Harry Haas, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Haas. You got the floor.
I appreciate the comments of the colleagues here, because, you know, we're batting zero, zero for three. And if that's a baseball game, you're on the bench, and these past three elections, this last one included, have not gone well at all. It is severely undermining public confidence. And I, I agree with Sheila, let's look, let's look at all the, all the nooks and crannies for the negligence, for whatever activity happened, but this has got to stop. We are undermining the faith in the system. And somebody sent an email, they were a laughingstock. You know, we spent a lot of time, those, Mr. Urban, Mr. Sedman, Ms. Howkin, we spent many hours on that election inquiry committee, and it, it, coming off of that, all that investment of time, I feel like I wasted my time, because we saw a lot of drop balls this past election. So let's get to the bottom, let's do the right thing, make this unanimous, and support an investigation here. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No, no problem. Anyone else on council?
Mr. McGinley, it's Kendra.
Go ahead, Ms. Radel.
I just want to comment that I, I do echo what all four members of council who spoke before me had said that, you know, the voters in the county have lost trust in the way we run elections and the integrity of elections in the county, for sure. But do I, I, I just, if Mr. Griffith can just like explain it a little bit further, if he does have that, that information, or even maybe the Office of Law, like, i- is it, is it just a criminal investigation that the district attorney can do, because in that case, I, I don't think there was criminal activity. I think the investigation needs to be done into this Dominion contract, and if we're going to continue down this path, like, that's what needs to be looked at, not necessarily criminal activity, but, you know, Dominion dropped the ball, or, or who dropped the ball on our end, I think that stuff needs to be looked at, not necessarily investigated for criminal activity. So if someone could just clarify if that investigation would, would also be into, you know, like, parts of Dominion, because I think that that played a huge role, not just the role on the county side.
Thank you. Other members of council?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Wait a minute, Mr. Schnee, and then there's someone else, was Leanne was trying to come on?
Yes.
Mr. Schnee, then, Ms. McDermott. Go ahead, Mr. Schnee.
Go ahead, Ms. McDermott, you could go first.
Okay, Ms. McDermott, you have the floor.
I, I was just going to say that it's a shame that the governor mandated new voting machines, first of all, in a presidential election year, but made us buy these machines, and so far, they have not worked. We spent all that money on them, so now it's a question of, what do we do? Something does need to be done in order for anyone to trust in our election system. I mean, mostly Republicans, but if you're a Democrat and this happened, you know, you'd be upset. It's not right for either side to have this happen, so for the voters to have trust in our voting system here in Luzerne County, I do believe that we need to find out exactly what happened. If it was a human error, whose error it was. And I was not happy with Dominion's attitude last night at the end of the meeting. They did act a little condescending, so I don't know if there's any way to get out of the contract with them, but I'm in favor of investigating what did go wrong.
Okay. Mr. Schnee, now you have the floor.
Yes, I mean, do we have, do we have any standing, first of all, going to the district attorney? Because, I mean, from the comments I hear, that there is no proof that there was illegal, anything illegal going on. My suggestion, my first question, Ms. Howkin isn't here. Dadhawk Committee that was formed, and those changes that were made, were they all implemented, Harry? You, you were on that committee. Were those changes implemented?
Not a one, Bob. Not a one.
Not one?
And not only that, Bob, we, we couldn't, we couldn't ascertain from the then-director what the process was, what the timeline was, you know, what the steps were. I see Mr. Piaz on the line, and when he is here, it was, it was a smooth operation. He knew exactly what to expect. We couldn't get any of that, and none of our suggestions were taken, not a one. It was a waste of time. Let's get some action on this now. Let's investigate.
Harry, Harry, one second. My suggestion would have been, my, my suggestion would have been to put Ms. Howkin's committee back on, but that would be a waste of time, you told me that nothing's, nothing was implemented on your changes. So, yeah, I'll, I'll vote for that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Steve.
All right, Mr. Urban, you got the floor.
Well, what I was going to say is, actually, you know, Pennsylvania, you know, Title 25, Section 2642I basically does give the power to the Board of Elections to investigate election fraud irregularities and violations of the Act, and to report all suspicious circumstances to the DA. I mean, the Board of Elections has that inherent power based, based under Title 25 or the Election Code. But this is just to reiterate that we, you know, feel strongly that we could, you know, as a council, to have the body of government, the legislative body, to, to, to sort of throw the ball over to the DA's office to look at the potential of any criminal intent. I think it's a neutral sort of action by us voting for this, to, to toss it over to DA's office to look at it. I do think, you know, to take it one step further, the county council, either as a whole, or, you know, the election inquiry committee to, to kind of get reestablished, and to meet with the Board of Elections in a public forum to provide continuity and then get on the same page with one another. I think we need to do that as, as a county, because the Board of Elections has a lot of powers that maybe they don't realize that they can, can do. We are the legislative arm, we basically provide the fiscal arm of the government, and basically can provide the funding for any investigations or anything that's necessary for, for the Board of Elections. I think, you know, the county executive branch has usurped powers, you know, that they don't have. And I think in some cases, council has also done it in the past by approving the And I think in some cases, council has also done it in the past, by approving the voting machines. That power, really, the choosing of voting equipment, lies in the Board of Elections' hands. We just provide the money. The county management really just needs to provide a building and the lights. I don't think they should be really involved actively in the purchasing of poll books, into the purchasing of machines. If you look at some of the case law that's out there, from the Commonwealth Court, you can see some judicial rulings where the equipment purchasing solely lies into the Board of Elections' hands. We're unique in a sense that we are a home rule government, there are 17 members when it comes to sort of conducting elections, but we, as council, aren't really responsible for that action. That rests in the Board of Elections' hands. They have powers, like I said, you know, when you're looking at buying equipment, looking at equipment, maintaining all of that, they are really the ones that have those powers. And I do see Mr. Piaz on the line today, and I think he probably would agree with that. I'd like to hear his take on it later on. But really, council is the purse strings of the county, we're the legislative arm, we kind of produce the policy, the executive branch is supposed to execute that policy. You know, in our case, the Board of Elections, we aren't the Board of Elections as a county council, we're just the money arm. We hand out the money, if they're looking for extra money to investigate, I think we need to give them whatever resources they need to check this out. But I would make a strong suggestion, hey, we could toss it over to DA's office, and let him look at it, to see if there's any criminal intent.
Call the questions.
Mr. McGinley, one more thing, it's Sheila. If you remember at the end of, when the election inquiry committee put forth their recommendations, we asked you not to disband this committee, and to keep it in an active situation. And one of the reasons was that we were going to look at this election and see which recommendations were instituted and which were not. I think that last night at the election meeting, Linda made it very clear that she would like to call an election inquiry meeting with, how Steve just suggested, with the Board of Elections, and kind of work together in going forward. And I think that's what needs to be done, so that by the time we get to November, things are in order.
Mr. Chair. Anyone else on council?
Mr. Chair, call the questions.
Chris.
I'm sorry, Chris, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Perry.
You won me over, colleagues. Sheila and Steve, great idea with that election inquiry, get it back on board since it wasn't fall at all. I think I asked that question right at the end, making sure that we implement all of these, and we didn't have the authority to do that, and we were hoping that they were gonna do it, and when we found out that they didn't do it at all, it's a great idea from Sheila, you, and Steve, let's get them back together, let's get ourselves back together. You want me over? I'll vote for this.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
To be clear, on my resolution, there's nothing in near the states anywhere investigating criminal activity, to be clear. Secondly.
I think it's Mr. Urban's resolution we're looking at.
No, we're looking at mine, I believe. The one for the district attorney, right?
I was just over, missed this.
No, that was me.
If I misnamed that, sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. But there's nothing in there looking for criminal activity. And with all due respect, I do know the election inquiry committee did a fabulous job for two months, but they have no power. They have no power to make the management do anything. They can recommend, they can stand on their head, they could do whatever they want to do. But the management can say, thank you very much, have a nice day. And that's pretty much what happened in this election. There was no, a lot of this stuff that happened should have never happened. So the question that I have is, why did it happen? And that's why I want the investigation by the district attorney, not that there's criminal activity, to find out what happened. Now, the district attorney can find out if, in fact, Dominion was told to put that up on the page by the management, or that it was a human error, or that Dominion made a mistake. There's a lot of things that the district attorney can find out through their investigation, that we don't have the power to do that as council, and we don't have that power as an election inquiry committee. And the people of this county demand and deserve to have answers as to what happened to their election. To Mr. Snee's question, the charter does allow council to ask the district attorney to look into a matter if we feel it's necessary. It's in my resolution, it says, except this may be specifically be provided for in this charter. And in Section 209 of our charter, it does give county council the power to ask the district attorney to do an investigation. And we have that power. The district, as I said before, the district attorney looks at all kinds of things that are not criminal matter related. They look, as I used as example, the prison. They look at deaths at the prison all the time. Now, we don't aspire, we don't even say that somebody criminally murders somebody there, but the district attorney looks into the matter to dispel that rumor. What happened to the person? Was it criminal? Was it not criminal? Was there something wrong that somebody didn't do properly? All of those things come from the investigation. And that's basically all I'm asking for, is this council to approve this resolution, so the district attorney can go out and look, and bring us back a finding no later than, enters the date in there, that says no later than August, that he has to bring the answer back to county council, to say, I've done the investigation, there has been nothing criminal matters, however you can strengthen these areas, or Dominion did this on their own, and it's a violation of the contract? We can get all kinds of stuff from the district attorney's office, if we allow him to do an investigation. And I think council should do that, I think we have an obligation to the people of this county to do that, and I certainly hope I get an affirmative vote on this.
Anyone else on council?
Mr. McGinley.
Yes, Mr. Snee.
After I found out that the ad hoc committee did not implement all changes, I made the statement that I will support the district attorney for coming in, to make that clear to you.
Yes. Anyone else? I just have a couple of comments, and then we'll proceed to a vote. I think anybody has the right to go to the district attorney's office and ask for an investigation, and then the district attorney has a decision to make. And it's an independent office, and they'll make their decision, and that will be how the office proceeds. Obviously, the district attorney's office, their main focus is on criminal activity, which it should be, since they're the law enforcement arm of the county. We're actually asking them to do something that I believe is not part of their responsibilities or goals that they may have. Mr. Urban pointed out, and I think correctly, that the election board can investigate, can proceed with that, get the answers, back with information, and provide that. So I think that we're really going in one direction when we should be going in the other. And I believe, and it has been stated several times by several different members, there is, there should be a discussion regarding Dominion's performance, and what that means, and how we should deal with that. And that's a separate issue that I think we should definitely proceed with. And we will have that scheduled on the voting session, not the voting session, on the work session, the first meeting. So we may talk about that, get information, we'll get the contract, we'll get other information that people request, so that we can have a good discussion with the information. And if there's other information needed, we'll proceed to get that also. So with that being said, we'll move to a vote on the resolution, the Luzerne County Council to request an investigation of the May 18, 2021 primary election by the Luzerne County District Attorney's Office. Ms. Lawrence, please.
Mr. Vog.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Radell?
Yes.
Ms. Seven?
Yes.
Mr. Snee?
Yes.
I'm sorry, you broke up.
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Under the auspice of the charter, yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Geez, I could be the party pooper here, right? I'll vote yes to make it unanimous. Moving down to public comment on non-agenda items. We're now open for members of the public to address council on non-agenda items.
Just a reminder, it's *6, unmute on your phone if you're not heard. Thank you.
People heard that? *6, your phone is muted. If you want to unmute your phone, you have to use *6, do that. Thank you, Jared, for the reminder. Again, we're open for the members of the public.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Rabel speaking.
Go ahead, Ms. Rabel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to the matter on the work session with regards to 911, I do have one question for the manager, Mr. Rosenkrantz. If those are, if they have the final numbers for all of the municipalities, for law enforcement and first responders, for the portables, and the number of portables and receivers that are needed by all the municipalities, in addition to the, they have the set number of towers, the 911 towers, so that way that the finalized number is now set and realized, because as you know, Mr. Chairman, a lot of municipalities, the person, the number of personnel can increase or decrease as a matter of, you know, retirements and also new hires. So if maybe Mr. Rosenkrantz or Mr. Pedri can have that number, you know, if they have that number already set, I appreciate it. Also, with regards to the election inquiry committee, Mr. Chairman, as somebody who attended all of the inquiry committee meetings, I would wholeheartedly agree with council members Sideman and Urban with regards to the, you know, working together with the board to ascertain, you know, why the measures that, the recommendations were not implemented, why the Bureau didn't implement them. Is it a personnel, it was a policy dispute, or was it a policy measure? Or was it the implementation measure? Also, with regards to, Mr. Chairman, tonight, there was a PennDOT meeting with regards to the toll bridges. I would ask for the council to send the letter that they sent to the state, to PennDOT, as part of the comment that they're taking for the toll bridges. They had a town hall meeting tonight. So they are accepting comments from all municipalities up until June 1st. I just wanted you, you all to be made aware of that, because it took place tonight, PennDOT had the town hall meeting. So they're taking comments up until June 1st. And I will submit the email address. Thank you very much.
Other members of the public?
Cindy Brannan?
Go ahead, Mrs. Brannan. No, Mrs. Brannan is on first, then Mr. Mantle. Go ahead, Mrs. Brannan.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. It's good to meet each of you, even if it's only virtually in voice, but I live in Wright Township, Mountaintop. I've spent a considerable amount of time in the last couple of weeks talking with some of you, and I appreciate the time given to me as I navigate this quite unfamiliar territory. My topic of concern this evening is our roads. I think we can all agree they need work. I would like to ask the council to prioritize the repairs and resurfacing needed for so many roads in our county, and to publicize their plan for maybe one, five, and 10 years into our future. I've suggested that the council's website include a section that informs Luzerne County residents of the issues the council is facing, and how they're being addressed. It would be very helpful, for example, to see an issue like the roads listed, and then the current and anticipated work being done. I've received so many messages and pictures of vehicle casualties caused by our road conditions, with many reaching out regarding specific roads. If you were to add the current and future work being done on our roads to your website, it would alleviate the number of inquiries you surely must receive. I'd also like to ask that the interim county manager and Mr. Pedri's successor make our roads a top priority. Mr. Griffith indicated he would add our roads to the agenda, and Mr. Vog indicated he would make our roads an initiative for the incoming county manager. I'm grateful to both, as well as Mr. Perry, who has helped me journey through this foreign terrain. I should probably give a shout out to Mr. O'Neill as well, because he's spent a lot of time explaining how the process works and what the obstacles are. In addition, I'm also asking that each member of our council be requesting a sizable amount of the American Rescue and Recovery Act funds to be allocated to our roads. I have made this request, as have several community members, to our Senators Casey and Jumi, and our Representative Matt Cartwright. I'd like to ask that each of our council members make the same three phone calls. I know, and I'm stressing to my community that our roads won't get fixed overnight. The conditions of our roads have taken years to get to this stage. We must understand that it will take years to correct, and will require patience and teamwork to see them repaired properly. I invite my community and all of Luzerne County residents to join with our council to pave the way forward. Yes, that's a pun. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and again, thank you to all who've taken so much time to speak with me in the last couple of weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Brannan. Just so you know, that the American Rescue Act, the guidance that has been provided through the federal government, does not allow for roads and bridges, infrastructure to be funded through that. There is supposedly another bill at the federal level that is to deal with infrastructure.
Yes.
Whether that is currently, I don't know, but I think that, you indicated that you've talked to your federal representatives, and that's important, because they're gonna be dealing with that probably in a short time.
Yes, and when I was speaking with Mr. O'Neill, that is where I first came up with the whole American Rescue and Recovery Act.
Right.
To be quite honest, I hadn't heard of that until I was speaking with Mr. O'Neill. And what really frustrated me, and I know it has to frustrate him and the council, is how little he was even hoping to get from that act. And there is other, like you said, other things coming through for infrastructure. And so I just want to make sure that our council understands the condition of our roads, and I'm sure you all do, and that we are, you know, aggressively going after our federal representatives to make sure that that is a top priority and initiative for our county, because the roads are horrible.
Thank you. Mr. Mantle, you now have the floor.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. What I would like to ask the gentleman that has that letter that you approved tonight, they don't have to pay their property tax, but do they still have to pay the rainwater tax? That's the one question. The second question is, pardon? Did someone say?
Go ahead, Mr. Mantle.
Okay, if someone could answer that question, I'd appreciate it. Right? Also, the license, the license tag that everybody paid the $5, was that a draft issue, or is somebody refunding the people their money for the license? And the road and bridges that were fixed with misappropriated funds, are they going to reimburse the people for the funds that they put in roads instead of the bridges? And the Sanctuary Act, I feel offended by some people's comments. The military has spent millions of dollars in training soldiers for the military. And when these soldiers come home from the military, I think they should have the same rights and the same function as they did in the military. As far as guns don't kill people, I've said this several times at several meetings, if you put a gun on your desk, Mr. McGinley, is that gun gonna kill somebody? And the answer is gonna be no. You put a gun on Ms. Sedman's desk, is that gun gonna kill anybody, Ms. Sedman? The answer is gonna be no. It's people, it's not the weapons. So, I mean, I'm a gun owner, I have a concealed weapons carry permit, and that's my right under the Second Amendment, that I fought for, for 35 years in the military. And please, I hope everybody understands that, that's your right. Nobody can take that away from me. And please, I hope everybody understands that that's your right. You, nobody can take that away from it. Just the same way as the right to vote. That's your God-given right that we fought for in this country. And the people that are saying, "Well, it's a mistake." Somebody has to be held responsible for three elections that were, "Oh, it's a mistake. Oh, it's a mistake." The district attorney has to come up with some good answers and help somebody culpable of all of these so-called quote-unquote mistakes. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other members of the public, please?
Brian Dwyer, Larchville.
Go ahead, Mr. Dwyer.
I apologize that I missed the county election board meeting last night. Then, and I'm assuming it's not an agenda item, so I can speak on it here, but, thank you. They need to be recalled or resigned. I will publicly state in front of the entire county here and now, I'm an idiot. I have above-room-temperature IQ, and I knew enough to turn the voting machine on Sunday for a dry run to see if there were any problems after all the issues that were discussed in the last presidential election. And no one thought to do that in the entire county? If I'm an idiot, where does that put everybody else? As a resident of this county, I went to vote on that day after 20 people called me and told me what was going on, and I was told I couldn't vote. I was registered, but I couldn't vote because I'm registered nonpartisan. And I had to explain to them that there was a ballot question. Every registered voter in the county gets to vote, even in a primary. They just get to vote on the inquest. That took 45 minutes to get an answer from Luzerne County Board of Elections, and they had me sign a blank piece of paper. You felt the actions that Mr. Urban took several months ago were so egregious that you guys, as a majority on council, took the action to remove him. I find what happened the other day just as egregious. And as a citizen who was told he couldn't vote, and we all know that wasn't going to happen, I did vote, I find this just as egregious, and I feel I have standing to demand that this council take action. I can't believe you people were debating whether to ask the district attorney of Luzerne County or the Attorney General of the State of Pennsylvania to investigate this. No one said it was a crime. That's their job to determine if a crime took place. You're just requesting an action be taken. No one's making a decision here. That's their job. I, I, like, I just can't get how this stuff goes on in this county repeatedly. I, I, I just don't even know what to say at this point in time. It's unbelievable. Thanks.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Yes, it's Leonard Piazza, if you can hear me.
Go ahead, Mr. Piazza.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the recognition by a couple of members of the council. And with respect to the election inquiry committee, it's probably a good thing that you're asking the questions, and the only concern that I have is just because, you know, the separation between the election board and the county council, the structure sometimes gets a little on the cozy side there. So as long as it's just questions and the election board is there to answer the questions, I do think that they're the ones that hold the investigative powers for these things. If something did occur, which I don't at this time think anything illegal occurred, it's just more a staffing and experience issue. But I would say that I'd be interested in attending the election committee meetings and having some positive input in the future along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Rick Nardone.
Mr. Nardone, go ahead.
I have no issue with the DA investigation.
If you could be a little bit louder, Mr. Nardone, maybe a little closer to the microphone, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yes, I think it is.
So I have no issue with the investigation of the DA. I just want to remind the council that we have four new board members that basically got on board in April. I think we had a full group. Now, I've read the recommendations of the election inquiry committee. For the most part, it makes sense. Some of the responsibilities rest with council, but generally speaking, the six pages of recommendation make sense. They were put out sometime in January, and I don't believe, you know, coming from 40 years in industry, I don't believe that they could all have been implemented by May 18th. I think that would have been an impossible task. However, I would recommend that the council delay in going to the DA until sometime current board gets through this certification of the election and investigates, takes action, and makes recommendations that we feel is necessary at the November election comes up. I'll use the word flawlessly, even if it's an impossible task. That's all I have to comment on.
Thank you. Other members of the public? There are none. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Mr. McGinley, before we adjourn, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Could we have, could we have an explanation regarding that letter that was sent to Matt, from Matt Vog to members of council? Could we have an explanation as to why that letter?
That, essentially, I believe, would be a personnel issue.
And potential litigation.
Yeah, so I think at this point, we could have a second session.
Could we, could we at least get some clarity as to why the letter was sent to some members of council, but not all members of council? I thank Councilman Vog for forwarding it off to us, but why was that sent to those folks and not to all of council?
Well, you'd have to ask the person who sent that message, and I think you are aware of that person.
Okay, all right. Well, I just, I just find it very disturbing that we get yet another problem with the prison. And, you know, so I'll edit it that because I understand the gravity of the situation. So thank you so much.
Yep. Motion for adjournment, Mr. Schnee. Do we have a second?
Second, Chris.
Mr. Perry, all favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposition, any abstentions? None heard. Motion carries. It's now eight, 10. We're going to take a 10-minute break. Allow everybody to catch your breath and maybe get us a beverage or whatever. And we will start at 8:20 with the work session. And as you can see by the agenda there, we have quite a bit of material to get through, and so we'll start promptly at 8:20.
Hey, Jared, it's Walter. Are you still there?
Hey, Walter, I am.
Could you, could you give me a call? I'm still not, when I'm using my camera, I'm only getting the background. I'm not getting myself in the picture. As, and I was wondering if you could help me with that. Could you call me quick, or did you want to just, you want to give me a couple of minutes and see if we could figure it out?
Yeah, Walter, this may be actually pretty easy. So let's see if this is the issue real quick, and then we can call. So is your camera icon allowing you to turn it on?
Yes. Yeah, and I get the one on the top of my screen. I have a small white light, and then I have the camera in this next to it. So.
Okay.
The camera's on.
Depending on your laptop, if it's one of the new models, do you have a little slider right under your camera where you can slide it over? You might just have a, your camera being blocked at the moment.
Oh, you know what? Let me take a look and see. That might be it.
There you are.
You're the man. You're the man. I couldn't understand what's going on with that, but thank you so much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hey, not a problem.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, I took a two-minute break, so I'll call you.
Hey, Tim, I just had to meet you due to the conversation behind you. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't anything that couldn't be said here.
Okay, it's now 8:20. We're going to call the meeting in order. We've already done a pledge of a moment of silence earlier this evening. We'll call Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Griffith?
Present.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mr. Dermott?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Raible?
Here.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman? Mr. Schnee?
Present.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Vog?
Here.
Ms. Sedman? Ms. Sedman? Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Yes, I'm present. I'm 11. I don't know where Ms. Sedman is, if she's just not back.
I don't see her icon, so I don't, I'm not sure. But she's not present currently.
Correct.
I'm trying, I'm trying to call her. Her iPad may have died.
Okay. So when you get home, you can reconnect. additions, deletions, the work session?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. McGinley.
Could I possibly add for discussion, council meetings in public at the end of our agenda? We could discuss whether we can start meeting in public?
Well, Mr. Griffith, for your information, I've asked that we check that out to see where we stand and what is the requirements at this time. As soon as I get that information, I'll be happy to share that with members of council, and hopefully the information will be positive so that we can start again. But I think the discussion is a little premature till I have the information, but I hope to have that shortly. But I hope to have that shortly.
Okay, and, and I asked at the, I sent an email, I think to yourself and members of council to have the manager here to ask questions of regarding the primary election. Did you have that conversation with the manager to have him be at the work session?
I have not spoken to the manager today. And I'm not sure, but I have not spoken to him today, so I can't respond to that at this point.
Okay.
If we get down to, we'll check on that, but right now we have, as you can see, we have a lengthy agenda.
Okay, all right. We might take it up at the next meeting then. That's fine.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have some more discussions along those lines, Mr. Urban, Mr. Excuse me, Sir Griffith, I'm sorry.
That's not a problem. Thank you.
No, I shouldn't use the proper name, sorry. Very in light of our timeframe and the fact that we have some people who are guests who are making presentations. I would ask that we do number nine first, Mr. Favello's group. And then we'll proceed with Mr. Rosa Krantz, which has, he has quite a bit of the agenda. So do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Present it, Schnee.
Mr. Schnee, do we have a second for Mr. Schnee?
Second.
Second. All favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
In opposition, the abstentions, none heard nor been carried. Attorney Favello, since you were a guest this evening, and you've been waiting for probably a little bit. We'd like to offer you the chance to present your information first.
Thank you very much, council members. I appreciate it. I know you've been at it for quite some time, about three hours already, and we'll keep our presentation short. We are before council with a LURDA request for a one hundred acre site in the city of Hazelton. I represent Hillwood Properties and with me this evening to give you a brief presentation and answer your questions is a gentleman by the name of Chris Fensel from Hillwood Properties. And with that counsel, I'd like to turn it over to Chris. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Connie. Chairman McGinley, members of the council, I appreciate an opportunity to speak to you this evening. And as Connie said, we'll, we'll try to make our, our remarks brief. Tonight, we are pleased to present a request to council to adopt a LURDA program for Hazelton Logistics Park. Hazelton Logistics Park is a phased two building industrial warehouse logistics development within the city of Hazelton and is currently under construction for, for a portion of that phase. The, the site has, has been a, a former strip mine has sat largely vacant and undeveloped for close to sixty years. So we're excited to, to bring this development to the market and to the community for the, the future economic benefit that it, that it holds in, in tax generation as well as employment. So again, the, the, the project is located within the city of Hazelton. We have full support on the development and the LURDA program from the city. The city has passed a, a LURDA program. And we also have support in a, a resolution from the Hazelton area school district for a, a LURDA program. So I, I'm happy to answer any, any questions the, the council might have.
Council members, questions please? Questions for Mr. Favello or what was it? What was your name? Excuse me again?
Fensel, Chris, Chris Fensel, that's his N- Frank E. N. C. E. L.
Okay.
Mr. Fensel.
Mr. Favello.
I'm sorry. Mr. Cherick, I have the floor.
Absolutely, go ahead.
Hi, Mr. Fensel, Mr. Conrad, uh, Mr. Favello, sorry about that, Connie. Could we see a schedule of the proposed LURDA abatement? Can you project that there?
Yeah.
Sure.
I can answer that, Chris. We were asked to present a package to council, which I did. The package contains a brief memorandum, history of property with our request. The, the schedule provides the same yearly payment over the ten year exemption period, ten thousand dollars, which was approved a couple of months ago by county council for Hazelton Creek. There is one difference, I think, or two between our request and Hazelton Creek. Hazelton Creek was for a property of about two hundred and twenty-five acres. Our property and Chris can confirm this, I think we're about a hundred acres. So we're paying the same, we're proposing the same pilot payment as Hazelton Creek, only on a per acre basis, more, about twice as much. And secondly, as Chris said, we are under construction. We've been working on this project now for over two years. We are fully permitted, as our memo indicates, in virtually all respects, from highway occupancy to NPDEs to planning, zoning. And we're, we're moving dirt. Now, we expect the steel to go up in, in July and the building to be open by this time next year. And that means that our pilot payments are gonna kick into the county. We think quite a bit ahead of other LURDA requests that the county has addressed. So that, Councilman Haas, does that answer your question?
Actually, it doesn't, because I'm looking at page two fifty-nine of the agenda packet. And it says that calls for a hundred percent tax abatement through, through the ten years. Am I reading that correctly?
It does.
So it's essentially a K O Z. That's, that's an opportunity zone.
Resolution also contains a pilot payment of ten thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I, I just have a really difficult time supporting that because, again, there's development being spurred all over the place. And I just don't think it benefits the taxpayers overall. I don't know if you can massage that contract, if you, if you saw the last meeting that North Point did. They brought forth alert at the beginning and they, they kind of sweetened the package, if you would. Just to, again, benefit the taxpayers of Loser County, because the developers here are saying, where's my tax abatement? You know, where's my benefit? And they've got to maintain their properties. They're paying their taxes. And, you know, we're creating value on the council by letting people set up shop here tax-free. So I don't know if you could, if you could work on that at all for us.
We'll, we'll certainly take it up with Hillwood and, and get back to you on that. But we're, I can communicate, I'll be communicating with county council, so we can get back to them. Or would you prefer I get back directly to Chairman McGinley?
I think send that back to the office of law, because they're the ones who prepare that kind of information. And then we'll share that with all members of council.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I'm sure this is understood, but the, the abatement is on the incremental real estate tax from the, the new construction. So there is a, a, a base of, of tax that will still be paid as well as the, the pilot payments.
Other members of council?
Mr. McGinley?
Go ahead, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you. Mr. Vel- Velvall, what is the current tax? I, I didn't get a chance to read the packet. I'm, I apologize. What is the current taxes generated on that property currently as, as you own it?
On vacant property, I'm not exactly sure on the, on the amounts. It consists of three separate parcels that I think eventually will be consolidated into one. It's not much. I would hate to guess at it, Councilman Griffith. Perhaps Chris has a little more information.
I apologize. I don't have that information readily available.
So, so, and, and basically, I, I mean, I was looking at the same thing that Mr. Haas was looking at. Is that, you know, we didn't see a schedule in there because it says a hundred percent abatement, which is, as, as he, as, quite honestly, and quite keenly stated that it is, that makes that a K O Z. And I do appreciate the fact that we're gonna get a ten thousand dollar pilot. However, you know, based on how much money we're going to be providing in the LURDA, a hundred percent property tax abatement, the ten thousand dollars is probably in, you figure in year five is gonna be probably next to miniscule in comparison to what kind of taxes we could generate had, had we put that on a sliding scale as the other alert is, as well. So I, you know, I, I agree with Mr. Haas. I don't, I don't feel I can support a hundred percent property tax abatement. I'm not a big fan of alerters to start with. I think it's, I think it's unfair to regular businesses in the county in general. I think it's, you know, I think big businesses end up getting a, a better, a better deal, for lack of a better term, than a regular small business that wants to open up a, a shop he can't get alerted in. And I understand there's a lot of jobs being created here. You're cleaning up the environment. Have a pretty good idea where you're, you're starting to dig. I think you're right there by that small auto shop right there on three oh nine in the back. So I, I drove by there today. So I think, I think it's worthwhile investment, but I can't, I, I cannot, as a councilman, support a hundred percent property tax abatement. I don't think it's fair to the taxpayers of the county. I mean, certainly a sliding scale, if it's beneficial, we'll do that. But that's my only concern with the LURDA, and I haven't read it, so I, I'm not being overly critical. But at some point, I'll get a chance to read the whole packet. It's pretty lengthy. Thank you.
Other members of council?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
How many workers are you employing to build this building?
So that, that's, I would say there's, on a, when the building is under vertical construction, there could be upwards of one hundred plus or minus employees by, by the general contractor and subcontractors on site. Currently, under the site development, there's, there's probably thirty pieces of equipment out there and probably the, the same or a little more in the number of operators.
Labor, you're gonna use local labor?
So for construction, is that the question?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, so, so we, we leave the, the labor decisions up to the, the general contractor. This, this project is being constructed by Blue Rock Construction. And, and they, they pull labor from, from, from all over. They're an Allentown-based company, but they do have employees in, in the Hazelton area. So I can't say for sure if they're local or what the percentage is of, of local employment.
Well, we'd like you to see as much local labor as possible on the project.
Councilman Schnee, we could, we could do that. I could tell you our, our project manager is Craig Karshner from Hazelton.
Right. Building permits, just the building permits, what will the city of Hazelton, who is in Act forty-seven receive?
In, in terms of fees?
Correct.
So that, that's under the, the general contract. I, I don't have a, a figure for you this evening, but I can, I'd certainly look into it.
Could you add that information for next Tuesday?
Uh, yes.
And, and your tenant, how many jobs are gonna be provided?
So as, as our Yeah, as our, our friendly competitor and peer, Brent Miles earlier with North Point. This, this project is, is commencing on a speculative development. So we don't have any specific tenant in line. We, of course, are marketing very heavily and, and receiving lots of, lots of inquiries. So I, I can't really speak to any specifics on, on the, the employee expectation. But in, in these, depending on the specific use, you know, we often find that the, the parking that is, is planned for the site, in this case, it's, it's approximately three hundred automobile parks. That, that, that number can work out in, in a variety of ways to, to kind of get an estimate of, of its employment base. But it, it could be a, a, a one to three shifts per day, depending on the, how, the hours of activity. So you could see anywhere from, you know, two hundred to six hundred employees throughout a day. But again, that's, that's just speculative. I, I can't tell you what the ultimate user will, will provide in terms of jobs.
Well, I'd just like to thank you for picking that site, because I'm well aware of that site. Again, it's one of those places where nothing would ever be built on it if you didn't proceed with it. And again, Hazelton's in Act forty-seven. I just think it's a big shot in the arm for the city of Hazelton to get
Yeah.
jobs and, and the businesses around it will profit. And I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the comment. And we, we are, we're truly excited for the, the opportunity to work within the, the city of Hazelton. And we know what an economic boost this, this job will, or this project will provide. It's, it's arguably the largest development ever undertaken within the city of, of Hazelton. And Hazelton's known for a, a, a good skilled workforce. And, and this site should, should really benefit from the proximity to, to the local employee pool as well as the, the high quality distribution or the, the interstate road network that, that is surrounding the, the site.
Other members of council? So I think that, based on what we've heard this evening, we would like to have information regarding the amount of taxes paid on the properties at the current time. And you were gonna provide information in regards to, what was the other item?
I believe it was the permit fee.
Yeah, the fees, the fees that Hazelton City will receive.
And we'll be addressing Councilman Haas's request as well.
Okay.
Mr. McGinley?
Very much.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
I have a question for Mr. Velvall.
Go ahead.
In, I'm looking at, while we're discussing this, on page two fifty-two in Adobe, it's actually two forty-nine. Let me see, I'm sorry, two, it's page, agenda page two fifty, where Hazelton City has an exemption area and exemption amount. And there's, they're having exemption schedule in there for Hazelton City. And there's this ninety percent for the first five years, and then it's eighty percent for the sixth, seventh, it's sixty percent. Is, is there a reason why Hazelton City has an exemption schedule, but the, the county does not?
We had, we had structured that, our proposed resolution, at really the suggestion of county council. It's structured as a pilot rather than an exemption. So we can, we can propose it differently. propose it differently, whatever might be agreeable or more acceptable to council.
But, but you're providing an exemption schedule for Hazelton City. Hazelton's full district, I don't believe, has an exemption schedule, right? They're getting 100%?
Correct.
Okay. So Hazelton City has drafted up a schedule that said, is 20, and I understand maybe $10,000 is more on your, on your pilot payment. But I think, I think that we certainly should have some numbers to back up whether this 80%, 60% as Hazelton City agreed to is more beneficial to the county than a $10,000 payment flat out for a pilot program for 10 years.
Yeah, we can make those estimations, sure.
Yeah, if you can make those estimations, that would be helpful. So we could make a, a better informed decision. It may be better for the county to do an exemption schedule as Hazelton City did, based on the amount of taxes we're going to get on our mileage rate and a $10,000 price rate. So if you can provide that for council, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, we could do that.
Okay, thank you. We're now going to go back to 911 presentation. We're going to ask Mr. Rosencrantz. And then there's several items below that to deal with the 911. There's different lease agreements and licensing, et cetera, that he'll also deal with at that time. As the monthly budget reports, you have that in your packet. Of course, we had the quarterly report last meeting. So if there's any additional questions there, make sure that Mr. Switz gets those. But Mr. Rosencrantz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've asked Jared Gatawski to assist me in what the presentation and to present the slideshow. If you can do that, please.
It's off now, it's on this page.
Okay. For the sake of time, Mr. Chair, I'd like to request at this time, with the amount of agenda items that we have, within the presentation, we are going to be discussing tower sites. I believe it's approximately on slide nine. So if I could just briefly incorporate those at that time and not go through each agreement individually, I'll just summarize them at that time. Just to save time, since I've taken up over 50% of the agenda, I appreciate it.
Okay. Well, you have a big project, so we appreciate the update.
It's definitely the largest project in my career, and I believe in the history of the county. So it's no small task, I assure you. If it's appropriate, I'd like to answer Mr. Rabo's questions at this time, just to get that information to him, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
So for the amount of mobiles and portable radios that is set and already been paid for in the project, we have approximately 3,497 mobile and portable radios that the county has purchased for the municipalities and police, fire, EMS agencies. And we have, at the end of the day, we're going to have 19 total sites throughout our county. As everyone knows, we are over 850 square miles with mountainous terrain, and it's very difficult to cover every part of the county. So we're going to have 19 total tower sites. So with that, we also have Mike McGrady, who I've asked to present with us. He's going to be doing the presentation. And as I stated, I will explain the six tower site leases that we have on the agenda as well. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Mike McGrady, the president of MCM Consulting Group and our project consultant.
Good evening, everyone. Could we move to the next slide? So just a little overview of the system. The goal of the project is to provide interoperability for users, I'm sorry, among the users and non-users of the system. So that's the police, fire, EMS, emergency management, as well as interoperability with the school districts. So if there will be a school incident, you could have direct communications with them through the system. And migrate the county to a, and the users to a common platform so that everybody's using the, the same platform. So everybody's on VHF, everybody is using the, the same radio system. And of course, we want to provide strategic plan for growth for the system. So the system is built for today, but it's also built the last 20 years. And that's all built in through the system refreshes, as well as yearly maintenance on the system. And of course, get the kind of most technologically advanced system in the most cost efficient way. So your system is going to be a P25 Phase II system. That's the latest technology, and that's a system that can last 20 years. Next slide, please. Of course, we developed a strategic plan based upon the results of the needs assessment, site surveys, equipment inventories. A big part of it was user surveys and interviews, interviewing the police, the fire, and the emergency medical services throughout the county, doing propagation studies. What propagation studies do is show the predicted coverage for, you know, talking to a portable radio and a mobile radio, as well as those radios talking back to the, the dispatch center, as well as the counties and the, you know, and our expertise. You have a great group of people at the 911 center who have a lot of knowledge and a lot of expertise. So we did a phased approach. Phase one was to make improvements to the existing system, and that was through 2016 and 2019, because we had to ensure your existing system was able to be stable, as well as, you know, provide the coverage needed until the new system was done. And that's all completed. Now we're in phase two, and that's a long-term solution for the new radio system. And I'll go over the current progress of that. Next slide, please. So, so this just talks about the actual system itself. It's an IP-based VHF P25 Phase II trunked simulcast configuration. And what simulcast means is that, you know, all 19 sites will transmit at the same time, so that you get better coverage countywide. What phase two is, it allows one channel to actually have two talk paths on it. So typically today, when you have a pair of frequencies, you can only, you know, transmit and receive at one time. When you go to phase two, it actually increases the capacity of it by splitting it in half. Trunking, what trunking does, it's a controller that as soon as a channel becomes available, it makes it open for the system so that you can transmit on it. And again, the coverage we're looking for is 95% portable coverage over the entire county within urban and suburban structures on ground floors, and providing a minimum DAQ, which is delivered audio quality of 3.4. And what that means is that's transmitting without having to repeat. So dispatch doesn't have to repeat, and a user in the field doesn't have to repeat back to dispatch. Next slide, please.
If I could ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Let me interrupt. The DAQ, what's the optimal score for that, the 3.4 there?
3.4, yes, sir.
Going back on that prior, on that prior slide. So you said it was a 3.4, but what, what's the optimal level for that?
It's 3.4 is the standard.
That's the standard. Okay. But that, that's not optimal? That's just, that's the baseline?
No, it's the often one that you would want. So, you know, so you can go, so you can go one to five, but 3.4 is what the industry uses as the, the standard.
Okay. And I know what Fred was talking about, horrendous terrain gives a lot of difficulty with that. So I, I do understand that part of it. Okay.
Absolutely.
Could you go back to that slide, though, and just project that one more time?
Sure.
So just explain that, that last component there, if you could for me.
Sure.
Not effective for coverage.
Yeah. So, so we'll call it the gold standard in coverage is 95% coverage 95% of the time. So you're, you're never going to cover an area 100%. So the goal is to cover it 95%. So that means 95% of all the, of all the mountain terrain. So if you're out doing a wilderness rescue, you have outdoor coverage in the, in the, you know, in the, in Ricketts Glen. And then, but you also have that same coverage in a suburban structure or a structure, you know, downtown. And so, so 95% of the time, the system will be able to transmit and receive from those structures. And then delivered all audio quality of 3.4 is the standard that is out, you know, in the industry. So that means you can talk to me, I can talk to you, but I don't have to repeat it. And that's what that means. You're muted, sir.
Mr. Haas, you're muted. He can't hear you, Mr. Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry about that.
Sure.
Just a follow-up question on that as well. You mentioned Ricketts Glen out there in the northwestern part of the county. So you, you take an area that, that really overlaps with Columbia County there and Sullivan County. Are they moving towards the same systems? How can we, do we partner with those with their county 911 areas?
So Columbia, so Columbia does have a very similar system. And so what you can do there is, since they have, they have the same technology as, as this county will have, is you can program those radio frequencies into the mutual aid, police, fire, and EMS, who will respond and into Columbia County. And Columbia County can do the same. Skookel County is another good example, is they can program their radios, you know, with our frequencies, and we can program their frequencies into our radios. And so really, it's just literally turning the channel, and you can talk to them. The radios that the county has are P25 Phase II, but they're also backwards compatible. So if somebody has a phase one system, they'll work. Or if somebody just has an analog system in VHF, they'll also work.
That's what we're looking at, because I know the rural coverage is, is really difficult in our areas. So that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide. So there was a delay in the project. I think we're all very aware of the COVID-19 pandemic. So the, the county asked for a force majeure, which was negotiated into the contract. And so there was no penalty, you know, to either Motorola or the county, and that delay was 92 days. In that, you know, obviously, the 911 center has to stay secure. We can't have people coming in and out. That could possibly, you know, cause an outbreak in the center. So the force majeure was instituted, and the 92 delay calendar days was part of the, the delay in the system. But of course, we're, we're back running and moving forward. Okay, next slide.
I'm, I'm sorry. Can I ask you another follow-up question there as well?
Yes, sir.
And, and this might be toward, better suited for Fred as well. Well, we've had some issues with some of the local municipalities talking about having difficulties being the guidelines, the deadlines to pay for the, these radios, as well as the shortfall in the intended LSA grants, because, because of the COVID, because of the, the revenue coming from the casinos has been delayed. Can, can we get an update on that area? And again, forgive me, Fred, that's better tailored for you.
No, he's right here. I'm right here.
Or if it's the appropriate time to ask that, that might be later.
Well, I could answer it. I reached out after the last meeting. I know you brought up LSA grant funding, and there was a particular municipality and a couple of agencies that were concerned about it. Honestly, out of every municipality and agency, only two had concerns about that that I knew of. Back in October, I sent out notices and a letter to every police, fire, and EMS agency notifying them that we extended, Motorola agreed to extend the 44% discount due to COVID at the time, the 44% buy contract discount until June 25, 2021 of this year. We have been discussing this project for over four to five years. And honestly, it was, it was almost a shock to me that there were some concerns that agencies didn't have enough time to prepare for the funding. As you know, we have nothing to do with the LSA grant awards, but municipalities were directly funded through the CARES Act funding as well, significant amounts of money to each municipality. So I did inform and spend several hours with the township manager, informed her of all of this, and I spoke directly to the fire department and put them in contact with our contract manager through Motorola. And last I knew, they were working on some type of agreement to help them out with their incident or their concern about not meeting the deadline.
Well, thanks for taking the extra time, even though I know you got plenty to worry about. So on behalf of those folks, thank you for that. And I'm just glad it's moving forward. And, you know, I don't have to know all the, all the greasy details or everything, but very good, very good. Thanks for the follow-through on that.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Yep. Mr. McGinley, could I ask Mr. Rosencrantz a question quick?
Well, can we say?
Or do you want to wait till the end?
If we can wait till the end, I'd appreciate it. I'll answer any and all questions.
To go through, I think we're disrupting that, and we're losing our train of thought. And certainly, any question at the end is more than appropriate.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Forgive me, forgive me, everybody.
Okay.
All right. Jumping back into the phase two initiatives, acquisition and implementation of the IP-based VHF P25 Phase II.
Put the screen back up, the presentation, please.
Can you not see it as showing on my screen?
I only, I see the presenter. Okay, now I, now I got phase two thus far.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
So, so, you know, as you know, we did a competitive RFP acquisitions complete. Motorola was selected as preferred vendor, and the implementation is currently in progress. We've been working, you're literally day in and day out with them. Next slide. As part of the connectivity, you know, obviously, we're going to have the, the 19 sites. You have to have connectivity between those sites. So acquisition implementation of 150 megabit ethernet capable MPLS microwave ring was done. And so that was sent out for, you know, RFP again, Conpros was selected as preferred vendor, and they're using Nokia microwave system. And that implementation is in progress. If you would drive past the emergency management building, you know, downtown, you would see a brand new tower there, as well as two large microwave dishes already installed on the tower. So as you start driving around the county over the next few weeks, you'll see a lot of this in progress. Next slide. Civil work. So some new towers, civil work is being prepared for the, the system. So one new tower site is at Harris Pond. That's Ross Township, and that's over at the Pennsylvania Fish Commission. They were very gracious to allow the county to, to build a tower at the top of the mountain there, where it was really needed to provide, provide coverage. You know, as the, as, you know, Councilman Haas had mentioned, we're very rural here. So you need to have towers in places you typically didn't have them to ensure that the police, the fire, and the paramedics had appropriate coverage. So invitation for bid was issued, bids reviewed, preferred vendor selected, and that was Skyhook. They were the winning vendor for that site. Next slide. Some additional work that was done, we had four monopoles towers that needed replaced. So, and also we have sites where we're putting new pads or shelters, generators, and propane tanks. So four existing sites actually failed what's called a structural analysis. They were not strong enough to hold the new microwave, as well as the antennas for the radio system, because they were older towers. And so it was Campbell's Ledge, EMA, Freeland, and Penobscot. So those towers had to be replaced. The remediation work is at Red Rock, Bear Creek, Evans Falls, and Eagle Rock. And those ones are getting shelters, generators, and propane tanks. And then there's a lot of leases that needed to be done, a lot of zoning work, and a lot of lease agreements are Bear Creek, Dallas, Eagle Rock, EMA, Evans Falls, Harris Pond, Red Rock, Mohegan Sun Casino, Mohegan Sun Arena, Nescapek, and Penobscot. And RFPs were issued, bids reviewed, and preferred vendor again was Skyhook. They did a really, and they're a local company, and so they came out at a really good price. I think we're going to stop right here, and Fred's just going to go over the leases for county council. Right?
Yep. Thanks, Mike. So real quick, I'll, I'll just briefly summarize these again. I'll answer any and all questions at the end, if that's okay. So the first one on the agenda is the authorization to execute an agreement with the Luzar County Convention Center authority. That's a no-cost agreement, and they're going to allow us to place, receive equipment atop the roof at the casino, or that, the Mohegan Sun Arena. The second one is an authorization for an amendment to the current 911 tower lease agreement in terms with the estate of Sylvia Gagliardi for parcel of property in Bear Creek Township. We have a current agreement in place with them. The current one expires at the end of this year. What this agreement is doing is just amending the current agreement and solidifying a 14% locked-in term and rate adjustment, as opposed to over the entire life of the agreement and subject to market rent. We're also going to be installing additional equipment there and an additional shelter. So they've been very gracious to work with us on a, on an amended lease at a very good rate. The third one is the authorization to execute an amendment to an existing lease agreement with American Tower, formerly doing business as Verizon Wireless. This agreement is in Dallas, atop Ira Mountain. Again, we have a current tower site there with equipment, and as part of the P25 digital radio project, we're going to have to be installing additional equipment there and going higher on the tower. Real briefly, if anybody knows real estate with towers, the higher you go, the more the higher you go, the more prime the tower site space is. And a lot of these sites, we have to amend the leases to go higher to better our coverage for the new system. The next one is authorization for a tower site lease agreement with Aqua, Pennsylvania. This is to enter into an existing easement agreement with Aqua, Pennsylvania and Eagle Rock Resort. This is a no-cost agreement. Both are going to be no cost for the easement and the allowance of us to put equipment on the water tower down in Eagle Rock Hazel Township area to help with coverage down there. So again, those both agreements are no cost to the county. Fifth one is authorization for an amendment with the Borough of Freeland. Again, we have a current tower site there. As Mr. McGrady alluded to, this is one of the towers that failed structural analysis. So we had to build a new tower there. This agreement amends the current lease agreement between Luzern County and the Borough of Freeland. And the cost for that is just for the land at $4,788 per year. So they're allowing us to put in a new tower and an additional shelter at that site. And the final one is the authorization to execute an amendment to an existing lease agreement with American Tower in Nescapek, PA. And we currently have a current tower there with equipment there on the analog system. And again, it's going to be critical for the P25 system to have equipment. We're going to have to put additional microwave and antenna equipment at this site. So the current cost is $2,051 a month. It will be increasing $1,428.80 per month, beginning on the notice to proceed or whenever we agree on this change. So those are all of the agreements and amendments on the agenda. And again, if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them after Mr. McGrady's presentation is over.
All righty, next slide, please. So Phase Two initiatives continued. Of course, we also looking at improving the electrical power at a number of the sites. So electrical remediation at 13 sites, including a new UPS system at the 911 center. And what a UPS does, it's called an uninterruptible power supply. So it does a couple things. It makes sure that you get a power surge. It doesn't hit the equipment at the, you know, the repeaters and receivers and things like that. But it also keeps everything running until the generators kick in. So if it takes 20 seconds or 30 seconds for a generator to kick in and the UPS has run the power until that happens, that again went out for an RFP and the winning vendor was Joyce Electric. Next slide. So, you know, some of the work that was done, customer design review of the radio system, that was completed and signed in December of 2020. That's where you work through all the nuances of the design of the system. Staging and factor acceptance of fixed network equipment was also done. So that's where the whole system is actually built and staged locally. And you make sure you run it through a series of tests to make sure the system is going to work before you take it out to the tower sites. Frequency acquisition, licensing and transfers. The county was able to get clean frequencies. One of the big issues you have today is interference from other frequencies. So they were able to get frequencies from Motorola as well as private frequencies. And they're just finishing the final part of the licensing for those frequencies. Next slide. Acquisition of the subscriber that's in mobiles, the portables, control stations and safe school radios. Again, each school, I believe it's 95, will be getting a radio. So that will assist them in event of some, you know, whether medical emergency, fire or some type of police emergency, they'll be able to have direct communications with the 911 center as well as public safety users. County took receipt of the equipment in October of 2020. And then the mobile installation will begin, you know, this spring and summer of 2021 by the contracted vendor, which is Capital Area Communications. They're a subcontractor for Motorola. And then early installation of the dispatch consoles. Your dispatch consoles at the 911 center, that's what the dispatchers use to speak with the police, fire and paramedics in the field. They were end of life. And so they were able to, you know, install the system early so that it can actually be used on the existing system as well as the new system. So that's currently in progress at this time. Next slide. A very important part of the process is asset management. You know, obviously county council, you know, approved, you know, a tremendous amount of money for this radio system. So every part and piece will be able to be tagged and more importantly tracked. So whether it's a portable radio, a pager, a mobile radio, a transmitter, a power supply, all of that will actually be in a asset management system. So at all times, the county will know where all their parts and pieces and equipment are. And then, of course, there's also a website. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, please do so. It's luzernp25.org. There is a quarterly newsletter that is sent out to, you know, it's posted on there. And as updates become available, they're also posted on the website. So that way all the public safety users are very familiar with what's going on with the radio system. Next slide. Assistance to firefighter grant. Two applications were placed for the assistance to firefighter grant in 2019 to 2020 for, to assist with mobile and portable radio costs. There's no award to date on that. There was an LSA grant of $330,000 and that was for the Harris Pond site. And there also was a $1 million grant from DCED and that was used for the radio console equipment. Next slide. This is sort of just a breakdown of the budget, you know, with the radio costs, with the microwave costs, with the civil work costs, logging recorder. That's what, you know, logs all the radio traffic. So if you ever have to go to court, you know, for something, it's all, it's all, you know, covered. Consulting, some antenna replacement, fire alarm panel replacement. And this is some other things that are associated with the, with the funding. 911 server upgrade, computer dispatch upgrade, as well as some additional microwave. So, and civil costs are more than anticipated due to the replacement of the four towers. And I think there was also some increases just based on when you go out for bid, you know, during COVID, things cost a little bit more money. Next slide. So just a quick overview is the licensing. The review of it was completed, you know, back in, you know, 1819. Same thing for the surveys completed. The radio system microwave contracts were completed. And now really it's the implementation. There's a lot of things going on when you're installing microwave equipment, radio equipment at 19 sites, plus all the civil work. So, you know, every single day, something's occurring in the county. Next slide. So, you know, what are the next steps? The civil work should be done within 120 days. Continued installation of the microwave and radio equipment. So as the sites, you know, get remediated or as the sites get completed, literally right behind it, the microwave vendor comes in, does their work. And then the radio equipment vendor comes in and does their work. So it's sort of like, you know, it's like clockwork as they work behind each other. Begin the subscriber mobile program and installations. Develop a cutover plan. That's very, very important is, you know, part of the planning process is cutting over to the new system. Training of the 911 staff as well as the field users on how to use the new radios. Performance system testing optimization. That's a big thing is you make sure that the, that you're getting what you paid for. So you're getting the 95% coverage that you asked for, that's part of it. And then the cutover of the system by the end of the fourth quarter of 2021. Next slide. Think, next slide, please. And that's really the end of the presentation. Director Rosenkranz or myself would be glad to answer any questions from the county council.
Okay, Mr. Griffith, I think you may have the first question.
Oh, yes, and I appreciate the update on the system because it's, I know it's a huge project. My first, my first question was, you know, obviously we just found out that we're being able to get about $112 million from the federal government from, for the American Recovery Act. And I'm wondering, based on this is, I know they're putting a lot of stress on broadband and all these other type of things. I'm wondering if you could let us know if there's any way that we could utilize any of those fundings that we could possibly use to pay off this expense for this. I think that might be something we might, it might be eligible for. I don't know if you've had that question from other counties or not.
I've looked into it, just reading the, the act that just came out. I believe Mr. Swett's touched on it earlier in his presentation, but it's so new and there's not, there's not much language in there that, that says you can, you can pay for projects such as this. The broadband initiative, as a 911 director into the 911 center, I don't think I want to get into the broadband business. So I don't think we're going to be eligible to do anything like that. But there is public safety mentioned in there. And we do have a meeting with administration this week. I believe it's going to be on Thursday to discuss some of the possible uses for this funding. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to use a lion's share of the overages, if you will, the unbudgeted funds for, for this project. But again, that's going to be discussed with administration on Thursday. But we are looking at, at all avenues to be able to, to offset some of the costs with this project, with that funding.
That truly would be awesome if we could use some of that money to reduce that, reduce that debt that we had to borrow to put this project in place. But more importantly, I think there's some municipalities that may need possibly extra radios and things that they, that have come up in the past. Maybe we could use some of that funding to help those municipalities out as well to get that added, added equipment that they may need that they, you know, they would have to raise taxes for. So if we can look into that, I certainly would appreciate that. And my, my second question for you is, is have we addressed the issue about the concerns from some of the citizens about not having access to the frequencies by scanner? Is that still going to be a blacked out issue? Or are we gonna, are we gonna make provisions that people who have scanners can still use it? And then if the police department or fire department have a special situation, they need to go to a different frequency?
With that, I believe you're talking about encryption. And the fire and EMS channels are not going to be encrypted at this time. But we did receive support and a request from the Luzern County Chiefs of Police Association, who fully support encryption for officer safety. I believe the, the last mass shooting, there was actually an audio posted where the active shooter was mocking the police as they were responding to the, to the shopping center shooting. So I know there's critics out there that say that it doesn't happen that often and that it's not for officer safety. But with that request, we built it into the project and we do plan on encrypting the police channels at this time.
That's, that's something that's within the purview of 911. Fred, that's not something the council has to approve or anything like that, right?
No, that was built into the contract and that, that contract was approved back in November of 2019. And we discussed this several times when the police, fire and EMS agencies came into council. When we did our presentations, it's not something new that we just came up with. This was part of the project from the beginning.
Okay, all right. Well, I'd just like to clarify occasion on that. That's, that's all the questions I have. Thanks, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, Mr. Rosenkranz.
Yes, sir.
You talked about your budget and, you know, obviously the funding that we put aside for the project. Do you have any idea what your overage number might be at this point?
Rough numbers at this point. Again, we have, we have the expenditure authority and it's not my intent at all to come back to council and say we need to borrow more. So I want to assure everybody of that. Fortunately.
We like that.
Through sound fiscal management, we, we do have 911 funds that we'll be able to use to absorb some of these costs. And again, I don't want to say anything positive came out of COVID because it was a global pandemic and horrible for everybody. But the funding that the county got, that $113 million, that could be a saving grace for us and be able to absorb a lion's share of these additional unanticipated costs. Again, with COVID, everything has gone up. Steel costs, construction costs, everything we're doing with this project, outside of equipment purchases that were already done, have skyrocketed, as we all know. So to give you a rough number, we're looking at approximately $1.8 million. Okay. So in the grand scheme of things, when you're talking at the end of the day, over a $30 million investment, I will be able to absorb some of that with 911 funding. And I'll be working with administration. I've already spoken of budget and finance several times about this. And we're certainly not going to be coming back to council for additional borrowing. We just may be looking to do some type of budget amendment or moving money around between funds. That's our plan at this time.
Thank you. Other members of council? Well, gentlemen, you did a great job with the presentation. I'm sure if there's other questions, we'll forward those to you. But we certainly appreciate your work. And I certainly am looking forward to the new system so that we're able to serve our residents in a much better fashion. So thank you for your work and thank you for continuing through with this project. I think it's going to be a real positive for Luzern County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we appreciate council support as always.
Okay. Mr. Swett's? Mr. Swett's?
I'm here, Mr. McGinley.
Okay, we're going to number 10. Discussion regarding the ordinance amended to 2021 fiscal year budget for Luzern County, the drug and alcohol, $20,168. You want to comment on that?
Sure. So at the time, we initially had Lynn Hill on. There was actually two grants for drug and alcohol. I said before, we had numerous grants, we'll continue to get grants and we'll have many budget amendments. There was a larger one which we approved, which was over a million dollars. There's a smaller one for $20,000. So that is what is in front of you today. We'll be moving it forward with the lines to the voting session next time. It is a very similar grant, it's just a much smaller scale. And it needs to be used for the drug and alcohol area of the county.
Questions for Mr. Swett's? Or Ms. Hill? Okay, if we have any, we'll get those back to you before the next meeting. Number 11, juvenile center update. Ms. Kropomol?
Yes, good, good evening. The update on the juvenile center is we should close within a month. Buyer is paying in cash. Mapping has done their reverse subdivision and we're just waiting for mapping to approve it. Laura Dennis has been handling this and she's going to check with the title company. But we should have a closing within 30 days.
Thank you. Moving down to number 12, Mr. Jones.
Hello, council, can you see me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, it's Matt Jones, planning and zoning director. This item before you is a typical rezoning request on the part of a landowner here in Luzern County. The May family, led by Mr. Gary May, has filed a request to rezone three parcels of land totaling 6.51 acres from highway business, agriculture and R1 zones to a different configuration of agriculture district, highway business district and with those two zones, excuse me. It would be rezoned to agriculture and highway business with a different configuration. The, the backup materials for this item are included with your work session packet. This prop, these properties are located along Sweet Valley Road in Union Township. This is the area otherwise known as Mullenberg Corners, out that way. The folks there have their single-family residence on the property that's zoned agriculture. They're looking to expand that agriculture zone so it encompasses that entire lot. They're also looking to expand the highway business district where their family business is currently located to include the entire property there. This is where there is a NAPA auto body shop or auto parts store, if I'm not mistaken there. There's a NAPA store at that location currently. So this proposed rezoning would afford them more ready opportunity to potentially expand that local business there that they run. It would be a cleaner zoning of the properties. Some of the zones kind of straddle the property boundaries and. Um, it would be a cleaner zoning of the properties. Some of the zones kind of straddle the property boundaries and, uh, make for some confusion. Um, their proposal to rezone the properties would be more clean and would fill up the, uh, parcels with the appropriate zones. Um, we have notified all of the neighboring landowners within two hundred feet of the properties in question. We have, uh, here at the staff level, we have not received any complaints or concerns on the part of the public to date. Um, I am here with Alan Brzinski and Jessica Edwards of the zoning staff who are familiar with the site in question. Um, from the staff perspective at this stage, uh, this was reviewed by the volunteer members of the planning commission. They voted unanimously a few weeks ago to forward this item to council for your work session today and for you to consider approving the item, um, over the course of three meetings. Um, uh, today being the first meeting, if you are so inclined. And so, um, we would recommend this be approved. We haven't caught wind of any proposed, uh, concerns of neighboring land use incompatibilities. We think that the, uh, request is seemingly reasonable and, um, and so we wanted to put this in front of you with a recommendation that it be approved at subsequent meetings on a voting session and public hearing if you were, uh, agreeable to that idea. And if you have any questions for me or the staff, we are here to help if you need us. Thank you.
Questions? I think all the information is there, but there are future questions. Mr. Jones is available. Please forward those to Mr. Jones. Uh, and, uh, we will have this on our voting session schedule for two weeks. On number thirteen, discussion regarding the procedure for purchase county-owned properties. And I asked Ms. McDermott if she would begin the discussion here.
Yeah. Hello, everyone. I did, um, put the proposal out there the last time. I just cleaned it all up. I do know that the one that's included in the packet that was supplemental, Sharon had sent it out. It's not lining up right, so I will get that all cleaned up so that everybody could see it that way. Um, all of the changes that were suggested, there really were not much. Um, I know Ms. Howe had suggested a couple of different things. Um, that was all included at this point. If anybody has any questions about it or other suggestions, um, I'd appreciate it if not. Hopefully we can get this on the voting agenda and complete it and ready to go because we do have some other, uh, people that are interested in properties.
Questions for Ms. McDermott?
Um, I have one quick question for, uh, Ms. McDermott if she couldn't. Uh, if you would, if you would do something a favor for me, if you get a chance to talk to Mr., uh, Fred Javers, spoke to me about a repository property you may be even aware of, that he said he's having a problem with. And I'm not really sure when he spoke to me, he said it was like last year sometime, he put in a bid for a repository property for, I think it was the five hundred dollar number. And he said the, the people who he spoke to are still having a problem and we're already in May.
The repository though is, uh, with Elite. I can certainly follow up with them. But those handled with Elite. I'm just working on county-owned properties. That's something that I'm getting.
Okay, you're not, this has nothing to do with repository at this point?
No, no.
Okay.
Yeah, these are only for county-owned properties.
All right, very good. All right. Thank you so much for clarifying.
You know, if, uh, Mr. Javer has a question, he should forward to, um, Ms. McDermott and she'll, she'll track it down.
Sure.
I certainly will follow up on it.
Yep, yep. Go ahead, Remelda, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to offer that, but we can assist with that, uh, reaching out to Elite, uh, services as well.
All right. When I talk to Fred, I'll let him know that, get in touch with either, uh, me and or, or the office of law, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Uh, we're now down to committee reports. I know it's getting a little bit later, so.
Mr. McGinnley, if I could, I, I know we missed number one and.
No, we're coming back to number one.
Oh, are you? Okay.
Yeah. No, we're going to come back to number one, Mr. Griffin. I know, we didn't miss it. I just tried to, the guests who were on for a long time, I wanted to give them a crack to not stay with this another hour, hour and a half, whatever it would have been.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Act thirteen, committee, Mr. Voe.
Nothing new.
Nothing. ABCs, Mr. Perry.
Uh, nothing to report this time.
Okay. Budget, finance and audit. We did have a meeting with the auditor and with the budget and finance. Uh, at that meeting, it was reported that things were moving quite well. Uh, the information that was being requested was being forwarded to the auditor promptly. Uh, there were, seemed to be no issues at that time. But we did say that I would be in contact with the auditing firm after June first next week. And, uh, probably scheduled one more meeting, uh, so that, in hopes that in our last meeting in June, uh, the council would have a chance to see the audit, uh, from the auditing firm for Luzerne County for the year twenty twenty. Okay. Well, it's a slate of, Mr. Haas.
Nothing to report. Thanks for the support on that second amendment legislation. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McDermott, real estate?
Yes, yes. Uh, right now I'm working on all the marketable properties that Luzerne County owns and we're trying to break it down into different groups. Um, so right, uh, I have twenty-seven properties that I'm currently working on. There's quite a bit more. Um, we are hoping to get an RFP out for surveyor for the Butler Township property. And we've got the juvenile detention center update. Um, the procedure packet is in motion and, uh, looking forward, trying to get some properties sold.
Well, you've got a lot of work going on there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cisic initiatives, uh, Ms. Howe is, uh, not available this evening. County code review, also Ms. Howe is not available, but you saw tonight, we were able to, uh, introduce the, uh, section of administrative code. And when Ms. Council, Ms. Howe is ready, we'll get started on the other sections. Down to the next session, blighted property, Mr. Haas.
Nothing to report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Voe, county cares?
Yes, we meet Thursday at six P M.
Thursday at six P M. Thank you. We're from Parks Committee, Mr. Haas.
I had no correspondence with anybody from the front parks.
Okay.
Nothing to report.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything from them at all. The Plains Township Tiff, I think the committee is probably disbanded, but I haven't received any official, uh, notification. Uh, special election decision committee, Ms. Radell.
Um, yes, we met yesterday, Monday, the twenty-fourth. Um, we decided on an ad to seek outside council for the DA election. Um, the ad will run with letters of interest due by June fourth. Um, we'll review those and, uh, present the candidates that we choose to counsel, um, for a selection.
Thank you. Okay, that finishes up that side of the agenda. Let's go back to the monthly budget reports. Mr. Swets. Uh, you want, have any comment on those?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was stuck on me for a second.
Okay.
I, I do have the printed packet in front of me. Uh, I'll go through a few things and then as always, answer what I can. Uh, I just wanted to let council know that, uh, we've talked about tax collection, uh, in this report, we're a little bit over sixty percent. Uh, as you know, the reports are always for the month prior. Uh, as of yesterday, we were at almost eighty-nine percent. Uh, I know this council and the general public was very concerned about taxes as it related to the pandemic. And I said, you know, my thought was primarily due to stimulus and other money in some of these grants we talked about, that I thought we were probably ahead of the game, uh, especially where we were last year and in some other years. So I just wanted to let council know that people are paying their, their county taxes, uh, by the fact that we have over a hundred and three million dollars uh, of the hundred and sixteen million that's budgeted. That'll be in the next report. That wasn't as of April. But just to give everyone kind of a heads up that, uh, taxes are not an item to worry about. They're in good shape. Uh, one of the other things we cleaned up, uh, is while there are some, still some things over budget, we discussed in the quarter report that besides getting the first quarter report and working on audit, we're going to work on cleaning up some of the overages with budget transfers. And we saw some budget transfers a little while ago. Uh, again, we don't like to do them early in the year, but some of these things are estimates. Uh, when we have insurance and things like that, we get the estimates and sometimes we're forced to do transfers a little earlier in the year than we'd like. But that's the case. And I think on the expenditure side, you'll see that a lot of the overages were cleaned up or are a very minor number compared to what they were in the past. Uh, on the revenue side, you'll see that the pass amendments were added. We have at this point over a hundred and twenty thousand added to the budget. We'll be adding much more as things are passed tonight. Once, once the prescribed days pass, we'll post those amendments to the budget. Uh, you know, there's, there's still quite a bit, uh, to go in the year, obviously, because we're not even at mid-year. Uh, just kind of high level, general fund, we're at about fifty-two percent of revenue and twenty-four percent of expenses. So overall, while there are individual grants, state grants, uh, and some of those things that are behind, uh, expenses are only at roughly a quarter percent, you know, a quarter of the year through, uh, a- at the end of April. And we've made some progress on budget transfers to clean some things up. There are a few COVID nineteen items that I want my team to look at, uh, to see if they're either eligible for the American Rescue Plan or if they need to be moved to another account. There's not a bunch, but there is some things charged in COVID nineteen that if it is COVID nineteen related, that's great. If not, we'll move them out. So as I said, I have the agenda in front of me. Uh, I can go through whatever I can answer. Uh, any, any questions from council and anything else, as always, I'll get back to any emails.
Okay, Mr. Griffin, if you have a question?
Uh, yes. Mr. Swets, could you tell me how much money do we have in the Act thirteen fund?
Uh, I could, uh, but I'd have to look it up in New World. I don't know off the top of my head. Uh, if we were earlier in the meeting, I said I'd get back to you. I could email off council at the end of this meeting.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be fine because we haven't really done anything with Act thirteen money in over a year. So I'm, I'm assuming there must be some money in there that this Act thirteen committee could get together and start figuring out where we could get, you know, passing some of that money out for, uh, people that are, need to have, uh, some kind of help along the way. So, uh, maybe that would be helpful for, uh, Matt, uh, Vogon, his, uh, committee. So if you would pass that along to us, that would be helpful. But my other question is, as I look at the budget on, uh, and, and I just looked, I just wanted to see how Bureau of Elections was doing. And I see there's a transaction for eighty dollars in a line item that has no money in it. It's called, uh, uh, five fifty twenty-five. Other contract, other communication expenses. And I'm just curious to know in budget and finance language, if, if we have a rule or a, a procedure that like we used to have in the commissioner days, that if there was no money budgeted for a line item, you could not charge expenses to that line item. Do we have that same rule in the county?
Well, I, I think to your point, number one, you know, when we do the budget, even though we go line by line and we give these reports line by line, we really looked at things more at a department and division level. Uh, I'll answer your question in a second, but just to give an example and some background, you know, Matt Jones and planning and zoning, there's times where we'll get additional revenue and then we'll have additional expense. You know, we're trying to get things in the right line. Uh, I do understand your point that, you know, even though this is only eighty dollars, there's nothing budgeted. So that'll be something that we'll get to the, hey, this needs to be in a, a, a budget transfer and this is why. But no, there's not. And I, I think too, I think we've talked before, you know, we try to leave these at rather nominal dollars and pay the vendors. This was a large dollar amount. We would come with the budget transfer first. Uh, being that it's eighty dollars, I'd have to even look up exactly what it is. But there's not, and because we're really looking at things kind of at a department level, department expenses, department revenue versus every single line. Because as you know, when the transfers are done, it's every department within the division, within the fund, uh, not. Hey, so elections could be over and something else in admin services could not be, but I under, I understand the point. Uh, and when you look at the dollar amounts when they're posted.
As I, as I look in New World for that account, I see that that account had a budget amendment made to it for seven hundred and fifty dollars and the eighty dollars was paid for payroll. And I'm, I'm curious to know why we're making a payroll transaction out of other communication expenses. Now, obviously I can't see detail because it's payroll and that New World won't let me see detail there. But, but I mean, that's payroll. That shouldn't even come out of that. Shouldn't somebody in accounts payable catch these items and send it to your desk or somebody's desk for approval? I mean, this, this just doesn't sound, sound like something that should take place on a, and I don't say it takes up place on a regular basis. But as I said back in the commissioner days, if there was a problem where the line item was out of, over budget or out of money or no money budgeted, that went to the commissioners or to somebody to get approval. They didn't just arbitrarily pay it. So I don't understand why we paid eighty dollars out of, uh, other communication expenses and it's payroll. Uh, I, and I'm, I mean, I understand this catches you kind of on the spot because it's not something you add in advance. But if you could look into that and let me know what that actually was for and, and maybe send a memo to somebody to say, you know what, that should come out of payroll and, and maybe clean, where did the seven hundred and fifty dollar transfer go? You know, they, did they need the money in there? We didn't budget any money there, but now all of a sudden there's seven hundred and fifty dollars in that account. So I don't, I just don't understand why we did a budget amendment in that account. Uh, and you know, you, it says additional phone expenses is basically what it says, you know?
Yeah, so, uh, so other, that, the line that you referenced is, is used in, in general, not just for elections, for either a jet pack, a, uh, cell phone or, uh, an iPad. That's what goes in other contractual expenses. So that, and the, and why it would be through payroll, uh, I'm guessing it's a payroll reimbursement, but I will pull everything for you. Uh, if it's a payroll, but, uh, but that's what that, that's what that's for. Uh, that's what that line's used for, those three things. So let me get it. I'm going to guess of something to do with the phone, but let me, you know, before I'm incorrect, let me go back and get everything. And I'll also give the, the whole council the balance in the Act thirteen funds with, to your point, isn't going to be twenty thousand dollars. You know, there's, there should be a sufficient balance in there because while our, our, some of our reimbursements gone down, we might not have got three hundred thousand. We're still getting money each June. You need the balance for now and the committee's going to need to know what, uh, we anticipate getting in June for Act thirteen, so we can actually give some money by, uh, and, and find out what's available to be split.
Yeah, I, I thought that when we budgeted money at budget time, uh, the account that we use for the jet packs and cell phones was the telephone internet line item, which was five fifty twenty-two. But now I see there's transfers going into this other, not other contractual services. It's called, uh, other com, other communication expenses. And, and so maybe somebody's not aware that they're not supposed to be have any money in that account because we didn't budget anything there. But as I said, we transfer. So if you could look into that, I'd appreciate it. I mean, that was the first thing that I, that popped out of your summary. So I, I don't have anything else to ask you about at this point. So if you get answers to that, I appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. McGinnley.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. McGinnley, this is, uh, to follow up on, uh, Mr. Griffiths, like, uh,
Go ahead.
Current, um, questioning. Now, if it was used as a jet pack or, or something to that nature, could this be, uh, reimbursable through the COVID money instead of cutting out the regular general fund?
Well, I think Mr. Swets can review that also.
Yeah, I mean,
It, it's something we definitely could look at. The one thing is a lot of them were not for recurring expenses. So if you're going to buy a printer, you can buy the printer. If you need monthly or quarterly ink, that couldn't be charged with the program. So if you know a lot of the jet packs and the I T stuff, especially if you have a contract, uh, for multiple months, you'd be able to get that. But then the actual monthly charge, you couldn't pay through the, through that, uh, program.
I was just wondering because, you know, I mean, working remotely might be just a temporary expense as well, you know, until people are back into the office environment on a full-time basis. So I, I mean, could you investigate, investigate that a little bit further? And also regarding like maybe like some of the fif, the fifty-six million dollar money, I, I think some of the direction, um, with, that the federal government or the guidelines, one of the guidelines that I happened to s- look at was like, uh, for basically like sewer, uh, sort of like sewer upgrades. Um, can we, was that, yeah, can we do a little bit of research maybe on, on that issue and see if we could, uh, possibly get a project put together using that money for, uh, the separation, you know, like the combined sewage overflow, being able to se- separate the lines, the stormwater lines and, and the sewage, and maybe that eventually could reduce, um, you know, that sanitary bill in the future. Um, or even maybe negate some of the need to pay, uh, you know, some of that rainwater tax.
Yeah, that's something we could look into. I know some of the other things, uh, we, that talked about that are kind of in the same vein are, you know, everyone's aware that the flood plain and there's different areas and different places where the, uh, you know, the height is much lower than other areas. Uh, as I said before, you know, administration was going to present a list. As I said before, you know, administration was going to present a list to the council. That's kind of how I envisioned it. Obviously, it's got to go through, you know, the county manager's office, but that's kind of how I envisaged it, being similar to the, you know, what we just approved today, even though it was just the introduction, the capital plan, where council could add or amend to the list, but administration would say, these are some programs that we think are valid uses of this money.
Right, I mean, and, and knowing that this current county manager is going to be leaving public office very shortly, I think, you know, we, we also have to have a little bit of insight on potentially possibility of changes when the new county manager takes, takes office as well. I mean, things could be very fluid. The priorities of what are, are now may change in, in the, in the near future.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we're now open to members of the public.
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark Raybo speaking.
Go ahead, Ms. Raybo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regards to what was just said about the line separation through using the America Rescue Plan Act money, I am fully aware that the state is currently using out of the $7 billion, 290 million for a, for line separation for the MS4 for Lancaster County. And I believe Senator Jean Yaw, who's the chairman of the Environmental Committee in the State Senate, has put that legislation forward using the America Recovery Act monies. So if the state is using that money for stormwater-related projects, I don't see why the county would not be able to utilize the same money for the same purpose. Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to inform you as a member of the Redevelopment Authority, as we had our meeting on Tuesday, that Joe, Mr. Joe Hogan, who is the consultant of the Valley Crest Project, has informed the authority that there will not be a Valley Crest Tiff being implemented. So I just wanted to inform you of that, and if you need the meeting minutes of that meeting to confirm that, I will be more than happy to send that to you.
No, that's fine. You don't have to do that, Mr. Raybo.
All right, and also as to the legislation, I wanted to let you, you and the other council members know about legislation with regards to audits of elections regarding the sure system and the election, post-election audit themselves, amending Act 25 or Title 25 that had been introduced by Representative Frank Ryan out of Lancaster County, that the Auditor General would be responsible for that. If this legislation passes, it is currently in the State Government Committee. So I just, it's 1470, let me see here, 1476 and 1477, House Bill 1476, 1477. So those two pieces of legislation, if they move forward and signed by the governor, I don't think the counties would be able to, you know, have to, or have to look into the post-elections. It would be the state who looks into it, namely the Auditor General, Mr. DeFlor. So I just wanted to inform council of those things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other members of the public?
Mr. Manta?
Go ahead.
So, so let me get this clear, that they're going to use monies to satisfy the sanitary authority in, in helping them separate lines? And is it, this, this money evidently came from taxpayers, correct?
Ms. Manta, would you continue, and we'll try to offer some information to you?
And, and so the money, the taxpayers are paying double now because they've already paid taxes on the rainwater. Now they're going to, this, this money that they're using is taxpayers' money that is going to pay for the projects for the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority. So why can't they just shut down the Wyoming Valley Sanitary Authority and say, look, the monies are coming from taxpayers to begin with, so why should they be charging people from Luzerne County a rainwater tax? So I, I'm a little confused there. I mean, it, it all comes out of the taxpayers' pockets, whether it's the left, left pocket or the right pocket, still comes out of taxpayers' money. And we, the people, are tired of them picking our pockets for every diamond nickel that they can get. Thank you very much, and I'll listen to the answer.
Well, first of all, there's been those decisions rendered in regards to the American Rescue Act that will be forthcoming. Obviously, any of the legislation that has passed at the federal level or state level that provides funding, the only way they get funding is how they get revenue, which is through taxation. So I think everybody understands that. It's just a matter of deciding how you want to use that funding so for the best interests of the residents you serve. Other members of the public? Excuse me, I missed your name.
Brian Dwyer from Arkansas.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm not sure, Mr. McGinley, if anybody's brought this question up in, in a little bit, but I, I would like to bring it up and impress how passionate I am about this particular matter with the CDC changing guidelines and the vaccination rates and, and all the stuff related to COVID and social distancing and whatnot changing, restaurants being open, concerts happening and whatnot. I would seriously like to know when council is going to go back to in-person meetings.
I, I think earlier on, Mr. Griffin brought that point up, and I explained to Mr. Griffin at that point that we're getting the information right now, and hopefully, once we get that information and we know that what the proper answers are, we'll be able to move forward, and I look forward to potentially coming back to live meetings with our virtual meetings being available also at the same time as a result of action, the last council meeting, so that people in some of the other areas would have that available to them instead of having to drive here to the courthouse. But we're pursuing that right now, Mr. Dwyer.
Well, thank you very much, and, and I think keeping the virtual meetings is, is certainly a plus for the county and the council. I apologize for not having that information currently. I have not attended some of the recent meetings. Thank you.
That's no problem. Other members of the public?
Yes, Leonard Piazza with a question real briefly, and maybe this was discussed at the previous session. The go-forward process for the Election Inquiry Committee to seat again, is that something that has to be decided at a future council meeting, or is that already on the?
No, that, that doesn't have to be decided at a future council meeting. We already have the committee in place.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said, we already have the committee in place.
Okay, and what's the earliest that they'll meet? Like when will the next time?
The chairperson, and she's not with us this evening because she had another engagement situation that she had to deal with, but I'm sure she'll be notifying everybody, and there'll be an advertisement, and it will be on our webpage and the county website.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Anyone else? Well, we have a motion for adjournment. It's now 10 minutes to 10, well, nine minutes to 10.
Motion to adjourn, Sne.
Mr. Sne, do we have a second?
Second, Leanne.
Ms. McDermott, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition, any tensions, none heard, motion carries. Thank you. Hopefully, we have a great holiday weekend. Please enjoy the holiday. And we'll.
Take care of the holiday.
Thank you.
Have a good night, have a good.
Good night.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Night. Good night, John Boy.